...us in peace and multiplied and enriched and strengthened us. We have vainly imagined in the deceitfulness of our hearts that all these blessings were produced by some superior wisdom and virtue of our own. It behooves us then to humble ourselves before Almighty God to confess our national sins and pray for clemency and forgiveness. Let us pray together. Dear God and Heavenly Father, today we give thanks for this great nation and this wonderful and blessed community of Bonita Springs. We now humble ourselves before you, asking for these representatives' wisdom beyond their education, courage above their experience and sensitivity, the needs of we who they serve. Bless them for their work on our behalf. God bless America and God bless Bonita Springs. Through our Savior we make our prayer. Amen.
Amen.
Councilman Slakta, could you pledge allegiance, please?
Yes, sir.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Rule call, please.
Councilwoman McIntosh.
Yep.
Councilwoman Martin. Councilwoman Slakta.
Here.
Mayor Nelson.
Here.
Councilwoman Simmons.
Here.
Councilwoman Simons.
Here.
Councilwoman Longheart.
Here. All right, good evening, everyone.
Good evening, Mayor.
All right, good. This time we'll have public comment on agenda items. Anyone wishing to speak on an agenda item, please come forward. Agenda items only.
Yes, Rick Steinmeier, in the minutes, I believe I misspoke. The minute said I said that the federal government was going to pay for beach re-nourishment. What the newspaper said was the federal government, the city and the county were going to pay for beach re-nourishment rather than the state, city and county. So if I could get that corrected, I'd be happy. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else this time? Please come forward. Hello.
Good evening. Kathy McGrath for the record, and I'm on the Special Events Committee, and I'm just here to comment under the consent agenda. I guess it's 7C. It's our Fourth of July celebration. And I just want to tell you, without, I can't give you any lots of details, but I want to let you know that the proposal that we have heard about for the fireworks this year, if you thought last year was good, you won't believe it this year. And I want to thank you again for having these things. Those of us there in the trenches, we're the ones that hear the comments all the time. And you know, the economy's better, but there's still a lot of people that can't afford to do things. And they can bring the family there, which brings up another thing. I wonder how many people know that when you book entertainment, if you charge at the gate, they either want to cut or their rate goes up. When they know it's a free concert, it's much easier to negotiate. And finally, we get comments frequently. Why do you always have country western? Well, folks, you can ask anyone on the committee, you can ask Laura. That's what draws the people. So we have to do what's best for everyone. So anyway, I hope you approve this, whatever it is you have to approve, because we're going to put on a bang-up show for you. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your service. Anyone else this time? Please come forward. Well, hello.
Good evening. Christine Ross, the CEO of the Bonita Springs Area Chamber of Commerce. I just wanted to make a really positive comment. The fact that the art show is going to be down in the center of town at Riverside Park is a smash. We are thrilled. We think the Chamber businesses will be excited to come down and take part and be in it. And we just really want to compliment you for utilizing that resource for something like this.
Thank you. Anyone else this time? Please come forward. Speaking of which...
Talk about art. It seems to be, who's that? And now it's, you know who?
Hello.
Art lady. I am Susan Bridges. I'm the President for the Center for the Arts of Bonita Springs. And I would just like to say to you, City Council, thank you so much for giving us the opportunity to work with you and partner with you for the National Art Festivals. We all know that there's a new phrase that's been coined, and it's called "city placemaking." And while it's a little awkward to pronounce, it's sort of caught like wildfire across the U.S. And cities all across the U.S. are utilizing the arts in very positive strategic ways to develop downtown areas and build their economies within their downtown. And we feel this is going to be part of that critical mass, and it's going to help make that happen. So we're very excited about it and look forward to working with you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else this time? Please come forward. See, oh, come on up. I gotta do that going, going, gone thing. How you doing?
Good evening. My name's Larry Hilden, and I'm a...
Larry, could you pull the microphone up there? You're about two feet taller than everybody else that walked up there.
We're here to say thank you to the City Council for providing a venue for the SCORE mentors. We've, I've been a builder for a long time in Collier County, and I've kind of been reinvented and recreated and had a lot of help from Ike Lichtenstein in the venue that you people have provided. And we wanted to say thank you, both my wife and me and Holly. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else this time? Please come forward. And this time, we'll go ahead and go to proclamations and presentations. And we did have one on here to give a five-year service award to one of our employees, but he's not here today. So we're going to have to deduct today. Isn't that way?
Four and one.
Is that the way it goes?
It wasn't attendance, was it?
It wasn't for attendance. It obviously wasn't for perfect attendance. Sorry. But now we'll see. This is going to be, oh, SCORE. This is going to be great. Would the members and representatives of SCORE please come forward? And Ike, Ike Lichtenstein.
Everybody knows Ike. Ike.
I like Ike.
Good to see you. Thank you for coming. All right. Good deal. Whereas every year since 1963, the President of the United States has proclaimed the National Small Business Week to recognize the contributions of small businesses to the economic well-being of America. And whereas the city of Bonita Springs recognizes the efforts of SCORE, Naples Business Springs Chapter 0573, and the role that it plays in the Bonita Springs business community and the small business owners in Bonita Springs and Naples areas. And whereas the city of Bonita Springs is pleased to work with and support the efforts of SCORE. And whereas the city of Bonita Springs recognizes SCORE for assisting small business owners with free one-on-one confidential counseling, training, mentoring to support a healthy business environment and provide the necessary tools for entrepreneurs to succeed in this global workforce. And whereas SCORE recruits volunteers who are leaders in the business community, past and present, to share their real-world experiences with small business owners. And whereas the city of Bonita Springs recognizes the need for the ongoing awareness in the business community and thanks the outstanding contributions that SCORE has given entrepreneurs and small business owners here and all across the United States to succeed and grow in this ever-expanding global economy. Now therefore, I, Ben Nelson Jr., on behalf of this City Council, do proclaim the week of June 17th through 21st, 2013, as National Small Business Week in the city of Bonita Springs. They are so important to us. They are so important to this community. We get nothing but compliments from them, from their hard work, for their dedication. They've saved a lot of people, a lot of grief, and got them back on their feet. Thank you so much on behalf of everyone. Please give them a hand. Thank you so much. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. And thank you, Councilmembers, for recognizing us today. This is a great pleasure for me and all of us over here. I have a few people on our board. Carl Williams there at the end, he's going to be our chairman-elect in October, Carl. Neff Espinosa is our marketing director. What's your name? Andre Lehman is our client services and counselor services. And of course, everybody in this town, I think, knows this guy here, because Ike has been instrumental in helping us as we expand it into the Bonita Springs area. As you know, our chapter's been around for a little while. We're celebrating a 25 years in the area. This is the start of our second year in Bonita Springs. And we really want to thank all of you for taking an interest and helping us really get started, because it's, without interested community leaders like yourself, we wouldn't be a success. Let me tell you a little bit about what we do. You wouldn't realize this, because I don't think it's very public, but every month, we see anywhere between, well, we conduct about 100 to 200 counseling sessions a month here. And as a result of that, we also do workshops, and 45 workshops a year attended by about 600 people. And they recently did a survey. This is National SCORE. They contracted PricewaterhouseCoopers to do a confidential survey about community impact. What kind of impact do all the SCORE's chapters around the nation have on the community? And the results that came out of that indicated that the chapter in this area, that's us in southwest Florida, there are eight chapters in southwest Florida along the west coast. We turned out to be the most prolific chapter on all of the chapters in southwest Florida as a result of starting up 87 businesses in 2012, basically. Our clients started 87 businesses, and 127 of our clients said that the revenue from their business increased from the previous year. So 2012 was rather a sluggish economic year. And when you say your revenue increases and you grew your business, that's pretty good stuff. And the amount of dollars that that increase represented to the community in the area was $20 million in 2012. And that's quite a bit for a community that's relatively small, this area here, in terms of business units compared to places like New York City, Dallas, and Houston, and San Diego, and what have you. This chapter also was selected in 2010, the second-best. I know it's not very good to be second-best, but we were second-best in the nation to... Thank you so much. Second-best in the nation to Orange County, California, you know, which is about 10 times the size in the terms of the total number of business units in the area. So as a result of that, we have, let me say, we have about 60 people, just so you know a little bit about the chapter. We have a large number of our counselors live, of course, in the Bonita Springs area and in North Naples, some in Estero as well. And we cover that area very well. And I'm going to pass this on to Ike in a minute, and he's going to tell you a little bit about the operation here. I don't want to take too much of your time. But it's this kind of recognition that really inspires us and gives us the desire and the motivation to continue to meet the mission of SCORE with more vigor as we go forward in the years ahead. So thank you so much, Ben, for doing this. Ike, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Thank you. Trish told me to be very short, so I just wanted to thank everyone for giving us the opportunity at the Art Cottage, which was kind of an important thing for me, because one of my first mentors told me that, you know, accounting is really an art. So to be in the Art Cottage where we are there on Tuesday mornings and on Friday mornings with, by appointment, and we're hoping to be partnering with the SBDC to have coverage there for four days. And we have over 60 volunteer mentors at SCORE. And so that comes out for my rough accounting of about 2,000 years of vast business experience that's available. And it's not just for startups. So I really hope that people understand that it's not just for startups. If you have any kind of business issue, we have 60, over 60 people that we can co-counsel on. So just if you want to look for us in the SBDC down at the cottage, we're open for business, and hopefully we'll be there four days a week, pretty soon.
Thank you very much. Everybody give him another hand, please.
Photo op. Thank you. Don't leave him there. Photo, photo. Photo op, photo op. Gather up.
Ready? Yep. Thank you.
Okay, our next proclamation. And this is, they're all great proclamations that we get to do here, great organizations, great people, but this one means a great deal to me personally. Whereas the open exchange of public discourse is essential to the democratic system of government. And whereas a cornerstone of democracy that Americans have observed certain rules of behavior generally known as civility. And whereas civility derived from the Latin words civitas, meaning city, and civis from citizen, is behavior worthy of citizens living in a community or in common with others. And whereas displays of anger, rudeness, ridicule, impatience, and lack of respect and personal attacks detract from the open exchange of ideas, prevent fair discussion of the issues, and can discourage individuals from participation in their government. And whereas civility can assist in reaching consensus on diverse issues and allow for mutually respectful, ongoing relationships. And whereas civility can uplift our daily lives and make it more pleasant to live in an organized society. Whereas the city of county and local government law section of the Florida bar urges the adoption and the pledge of civility by all citizens in the state of Florida, now therefore, I, Ben Nelson Jr., on behalf of the City Council and the city of Bonita Springs, do hereby proclaim the month of June 2013 as Civility Month and request all citizens to exercise civility toward each other. Audrey, would you come up here and accept this on behalf of the bar?
For a month.
And everyone, please give a hand for civility. Thank you very much.
Speech, speech, speech. Speechless, no.
Ben, this is just for a month?
Clocks ticking.
I thought you liked me asking that.
Do a year-round one if you wish.
And only in June, right?
Right, just June.
That reminds me of my favorite Office episode, when he said, "This is a place of sharing and giving, and you should just get the heck out of here." Or something to that effect. Okay, now, we are to the presentation by Lee County Emergency Management Director. Come on up. How you doing?
Sir.
And we are going to, we're not going to dim the lights today, and we're not going to tell anybody why, because we're afraid we'll have to cite ourselves for our code violation. So anyway, that's what we're going to have, right there.
Absolutely.
Good.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers. Thank you for taking the time to hear me out this afternoon. My name is Gerald Campbell. I am the interim Director of Emergency Management for Lee County. And the reason that I'm here tonight is to discuss the ongoing issue of the Bonita Springs YMCA and the status of that facility as a shelter, and to try to clear up some of the misconceptions and the ideas that are there, and hopefully let you see a little bit about where we are in this shelter process, because I believe, as we talked to city staff, they were very enlightened when they saw some of the issues that are out there. To understand the situation with Bonita, it's first important to understand just a little bit about the situation in Lee County overall. Starting in 2010, we received a lot of new data, new LiDAR data, which is, gives us ground elevation, new bathymetry, which gives us the coastal Gulf of Mexico. And what we found, what we already know, the land is low and flat. Turns out, it's a little lower and a little flatter than we thought in a lot of places. The Gulf is shallow. Turns out, it's a little flatter and a little shallower than we thought in certain places. And most importantly, the National Hurricane Center revised the model that they use to calculate storm surge, the SLOSH model. Simply put, SLOSH is a model that calculates surge based on the size and intensity of a hurricane. If you put a bigger hurricane in, SLOSH numbers go higher. Because of a number of things that happened during previous hurricane seasons, they decided that the attention given to SLOSH was not sufficient. So what we saw was a new SLOSH model. The combined effects of all of those things was most highly pronounced in southwest Florida. A lot of people are dealing with the same things that we deal with, but not to the extent, not to the extreme, that we see them in southwest Florida. The other piece, not only do we have that problem, but southwest Florida has been determined by at least some experts to be the hardest place to evacuate in the country for a hurricane, seconded by the Tampa Bay area. And if you're familiar with evacuations, if we move, they move. So we've got two of the most difficult places to evacuate in the country, side by side. What that turns into, this is a side-by-side comparison of the old and the new map, and it doesn't show up well there, but I would draw your attention to the two circles, one being the Bonita Springs area. The pre-2010 map shows the old surge zones. And if you look at that, those colors are red, orange, yellow, green. And if you look at, the colors are the same. If you look at the colors for the old map and look at the colors for the new, in the Cape Coral area, you'll see that we used to have a lot of yellow and even some green. That's gone away. It's all red and orange. Down in this area, in Bonita Springs, you used to see there was some green and some yellow that came across 75. That's gone. And that has, that's true throughout the county, as you look at it more closely as it goes through. So keep those maps in mind as you look at that, of the changes in surge evacuation zones based on this data that we found out. The consequences of those things? Our perception of reality changed significantly. The true reality, obviously, did not, but our perception changed tremendously. Those areas identified to be at risk to hurricanes changed dramatically at that point, based on this new data and the new model. This is where we start to get to the point. The bullet point says some, but I would say many of our shelter locations were technically compromised by the new model. As we choose shelters, we are obliged by good conduct and, in some case, regulation, to use the best available data from the best scientific stats. That is this new SLOSH model that comes from the Hurricane Center. Another problem that complicates the issue is evacuation times, in many cases, exceed the warning times for many of the products, specifically surge warnings. We don't have those in time to easily make evacuation decisions. So that's part of what complicates this decision. And then finally, communicating this risk, which as you're well aware, is very difficult to do to any audience, because my world didn't change, and now you're telling me that it did. How is that? Or what does that mean to me? I'm going to skip over these things, but they're in your package, essentially evacuations in the decision-making process. There's no ability to be liability-free. There's no ability to be risk-free. Whatever we do, whatever you do, whatever any of us do in this business, there are consequences to those actions. Negative consequences even to good plans. So we looked at a few things. People can survive minor flooding. They're not going to be happy, but they will survive. And our goal is to get people to live through the storm. Public access and use of information is changing, and that's a piece that we can't, well, it doesn't tie directly to this, it's a piece that we can't forget, the way people use data. Our approach to dealing with this is to identify the drivers that, what creates an evacuation? The simple way of phrasing that is that we do evacuations to save people. Well, sure. But how do we arrive at that? What people do we save? What people do we leave in place? How is that risk managed? And we developed some tools, and in your packet, I think you have some background information on our wind evacuation and our surge evacuation tools that we're using now. But the bottom line is, our work has been to find facilities that are safe for the situation that we face. The situation that we face is only known best at the last minute. And even then, if you were here last year for Tropical Storm Isaac, you realize even when we use the best and the latest data, we still get it wrong fairly often. And that's, that's the nature of the business. So how does that tie into shelters? It's as simple as this. This was, this is our current shelter list. Most of these facilities, the county and the facilities themselves, put extra money into. I highlighted a couple in there. The Bonita Y is down there. Didn't have those dollar amounts right there in front of me, but I know the city and the county put considerable funds into that. If you look a little higher on the list, you see almost $1 million entered Jermaine Arena. You see almost $950,000 into Alico. You see the elevations down there. The magic number that we're looking for is 23 feet. 23 feet is the magic number. And in case you're having trouble reading that, when we look at all of those shelters that are available to us to use, that's the list that's left over that we would put money into today. That 23-foot elevation is very difficult to achieve, very expensive to achieve in a lot of cases. And where that leaves us with the Bonita Springs YMCA is down here at about 17 feet, somewhere in that neighborhood. As we move through the decision-making process, what we do is look at the expected surge values, and we have to determine for each one of those shelters, are they safe for that given storm? So when people say, "We're not going to use the Bonita Y," that's not exactly true. We can't use the Bonita Y in some significant storm events, in smaller, less severe storms with less storm surge. And that has nothing to do, per se, with the category of hurricane. It's all about the saltwater that comes with that storm. If the surge is low enough to be safe to use that facility, we're going to use it. If it's not, we can't use it. And that is the exact same decision-making process we go through with every one of those shelters that you see on that list. To compound the effort, we used to be able to determine, or to depend on Red Cross to manage many of our shelters. This list of four up here are the only shelters that the Red Cross will manage because of their own internal policies. So now, not only do we have harder decisions to make, we have more staffing challenges to do this. The county, as I told our own staff, we're up to our eyeballs in the shelter management business. We don't have the staff or the people to do that today either. We're busy developing volunteers. We're busy developing community emergency response teams and working with local fire departments. We welcome any volunteers, and the ability to staff a shelter is going to be a big part of what it takes to use that. So those are the two pieces. When we talk about the use or non-use of the Bonita YMCA, falls into the same category. We've put a lot of money into all of those facilities, as has other parts of the community. Can we use them or not? It depends on the storm and the situation. We know we have to move people. Obviously, the more people we move, because of the higher storm surge risk, the less likely we are to use those lower-level, those lower-elevation shelters in there. So that is basically my presentation. Hopefully, we didn't take too much of your time to rehash an issue there. We can use your help. We will use the Bonita YMCA. We could use your help to help establish a staffing group to do that. If you could help us with volunteers, that's super, because one of the issues with it is, it's local for you all, but it's also small. It takes as many people to run a small shelter as it does a big shelter. So we're going to open our larger shelters first. We're going to try to make them geographically convenient. But the bottom line to every one of those is, first and foremost, are they safe? And in many cases, in many parts of Lee County, the answer to that is questionable right up until the last minute. So I appreciate your time. I'd be glad to entertain any questions.
Okay, I want to go to council. Just one question first.
Yes, sir.
When you say that asking the city of Bonita Springs for help to staff that, because Red Cross won't staff those that are under 23, I suppose, right?
Actually, they will not staff any of those that are under about 28 feet. Technically, it's a category four or five.
Okay. So is the county going to use Alico Arena, under certain conditions?
Under certain conditions, we will.
How will you staff it?
We are working on a volunteer. We're working on developing our own volunteers. Hopefully, we will get some FGCU folks to give us a hand. FGCU is the school. We'll also use parts of Alico, so we don't have the availability of the entire facility necessarily.
Good. So you've got the same problem?
We're still, exactly. We're working through that with almost every one of those shelters that you saw on that list.
Okay, good.
Is the same issue.
Thank you. Counsel, you have any questions for the gentleman? Yes, Martha?
Yeah. How does this relate to, let's say we have a horrible storm event like we've had, Charlie, Wilma, and, you know, folks need to go someplace, and then FEMA comes in. I see you going, "Oh, gosh." How is, how does this affect their response to a, you know, I would assume that, like Louisiana, Mississippi, coastal Texas, we all have this problem, because that's what a river basin coastal area would have. What does that mean? And this is going to happen more and more. You know, number one, what's the recommendation for adaptation? And two, what does that mean with the federal response? Does that reflect on it at all?
The shelter issue is a local issue, determined by the counties and the entities within the counties who work together to do that. So as far as, does this impact FEMA's ability to provide resources after the storm and those sorts of things? The answer to that is no. This is, this is our problem internally. When the storm is over, when we looked for FEMA for that presidential disaster declaration and those sorts of assistance modes that come in, we will deal with the aftermath, the things that are left over. And hopefully, there will be things left over. In a lot of events, particularly in coastal areas of Lee County, it's going to be significant damage. It will be a challenge for all of us. But it doesn't directly impact FEMA assistance, per se, in any way that I've seen.
Okay, and does the EOC, I mean, are you guys looking at making recommendations for planning and coastal changes to how we build? I mean, because this would affect insurance, this would affect our economy. What are we going to do?
That's an excellent question. And we are looking at revisions to building codes and others. The two are not directly linked through what we see as programmatic issues, but certainly[1741.33]
And does the EOC, I mean, are you guys looking at making recommendations for planning and, and coastal changes, changes to how we build? I mean, because this would affect insurance, this would affect our economy. What are we going to do?
That's an excellent question. And we are looking at revisions to building codes and others. The two are not directly linked through, through what we see as programmatic issues. But certainly, people in risky zones need to build stronger structures and we are looking to do that. The issue, when it comes to evacuation and hurricanes per se, rather than just the building code, is not only does the building survive, but if the people are in that building, in that structure, how do we get services to those people? So as we look at road improvements, structural permitting improvements, more resilient communities overall, all of those things enter into the discussion. But we have a lot of existing facilities that are difficult to retrofit.
And I guess, just real quick, that, you know, if the county structures some kind of training program, which you're going to have volunteers working in shelters.
Correct.
I hope that maybe the council, when the county would consider partnering with each other about, you know, those training programs and our volunteers can train with you guys and so we have one plan throughout the county. I don't know, you know, we have 5,600, 5,800 units now or, you know, spots in shelters that are acceptable to the Red Cross. I mean, if we get a big storm this summer, what, just tell everybody to leave?
We're trying to avoid that, but that's a distinct possibility. If we get a big storm, we can shelter within our own facilities, within our own volunteer staffing. We can go back and shelter a few more of those people. But that's still not a sufficient number of shelter spaces for a major hurricane that hits. So our advice is going to be to move further inland, probably to the east coast even, where we can work with the state to open additional shelter spaces for those folks evacuating from southwest Florida.
Yeah.
So it's, that's not a solution that any of us want to do, but it's the reality of saving lives.
Well, it's pretty good for the first week in the hurricane season to let people know that, hey, folks, you know, get your hurricane packages together, get your documents together. If you have to get up and move, you'll have, you know, your bag packed, you're ready to go, your dog food, whatever, and get the heck out of Dodge.
Yes, ma'am. That's our message through this. Listen to, listen to your elected officials, listen to your emergency managers. If we order an evacuation, your life is at risk if you ignore those orders. Put your kit in your car and go to a safer location. We work very closely with your city manager and assistant city manager. There is a liaison.
Yes.
For Benita Springs at the EOC, we work very closely with them. So that things like training and other issues, we will be glad to pass that information along, work together as best we can to, to solve what's a big mutual problem for all of us.
And now's the time to prepare.
Yes, ma'am. Absolutely.
Okay, Stephen. Stephen, go ahead.
Yes, I may have missed it, but could you explain to me, when you alluded to the map with color changing, say, green to a red?
Yes, sir.
So that surge potential increases?
Yes, sir.
Who actually made that decision?
That map is developed by the essentially understate direction through the Regional Planning Council. They actually create the map and the pictures and the evacuation times and others. The model that drives that map is the slosh model, and that is the model that FEMA and the National Hurricane Center use to calculate storm surge potential. It's been around for a long time. It's very accurate, but like any other mathematical computer model, what you put in impacts what you get out. In their determination, these mystical rules of thumb for whatever was an average hurricane were no longer true. So what they did essentially was increase the size of the storm. So for a given wind speed, a wider storm creates more storm surge. And that's what we deal with.
And if I could go back to the YMCA for a minute?
Yes, sir.
You indicated that the decision to whether YMCA can be occupied, it is not based on the category of the storm? Is that true?
Yes, sir. There are some technical things. Back in this year of 2010, the National Hurricane Center did a program that they called a decoupled surge from the category of storm. In the good old days, and even in the Charlie days, when Charlie intensified to a category four storm, the immediate reaction was 14 to 15 feet of storm surge because it was category four. Charlie was a tiny storm. It intensified late in its life before it made landfall. And as a result, it only created nine or so feet of surge that we saw in Calcosta. The model predicted that very well. That rule of thumb that we used did not. That event was magnified in both Katrina and Hurricane Ike later on in hurricane seasons with the idea that people say, "It's just a category two. I've lived through a category two before. That's what happened with Ike and Galveston. It was just a two." They had no conception that the surge that it was bringing was the equivalent of a three, four, or five. So the Hurricane Center decouple those, and that's why I'm careful to use the words, "it's not based on category anymore." It's actually based on that predicted surge level.
And, excuse me, one final question. Is it your office that will determine whether or not we could use the YMCA?
We are the office. That is, the call for emergency management is what shelters that we use. That is the county call. We work in conjunction with our partners at the Red Cross, at the Hurricane Center, with the state, and with our local municipalities as well to, to do the best we can for everybody. But ultimately, the goal is to save lives and sometimes that means moving people farther.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay. Does any other council person have a question? Go ahead.
I just have a comment. Yeah, you just alluded to something. Yeah, I heard Dan Trescott, who was very instrumental nationally about hurricane preparedness at the Regional Planning Council, refer to, instead of hearing category one and two and da-da-da-da, like you just spoke about Galveston, that we'll be hearing a category one A or a B or a C, and maybe we need to tell people what an A, a B, or a C means. Because I didn't hear that last hurricane season, but that's how wet the storm is going to be, how much surge we're going to have. Are we going to hear reporting like that this year? That it's a, it's a 1A or it's a 1B or?
You won't hear 1A and 1B because that, that gets to be really cumbersome and hard to explain on our side. But what you will hear is evacuation by what we call hurricane evacuation or hurricane storm surge evacuation zones. So what you will see, what you will hear, what you will see is we are doing an A evacuation. We are evacuating the people in Zone A. Now, that could be for a category one, a tropical storm, conceivably even for a two, but we will refer to it as A. On our website, in the All Hazards Guide, and in the media, as the storm gets closer, there will be detailed information on who's in A. What does that actually mean? That's available now in our All Hazards Guide and on our website as well.
Okay. Well, thank, thank you very much for coming in here. I appreciate it. What is the population of Lee County?
We are at somewhere in the vicinity of 630,000, give or take a few today.
630,000 people and you have how many spaces above a 28? 3,400?
That's about right. Yes, sir.
3,400. And the majority of the people probably don't live above 28, do they?
No, they do not.
Okay.
The majority of the people actually live under that 23-foot mark.
Just might ought to figure out what we're going to do about this.
We are working very hard to do that.
Thank you very much.
Unfortunately, there are no good answers, but thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. Thank you so much for your help.
Yes, sir.
Thanks, Jim. Appreciate it.
Good point.
Okay. Now, at this time, we're going to go to the consent agenda staff of council. Does anyone have, take your time, does anyone have anything that you would like to pull from the consent agenda for discussion?
Um, yeah. The Art League. What is that?
That would be G.
It's G.
Okay.
I'll move to approve the rest.
Uh, there's motion to approve the remainder. Anything else? And there's a second. Roll call.
Councilman Slackta?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilwoman Simmons?
Aye.
Councilwoman Longheart?
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh?
Aye.
Item G. Martha?
Just real quick, I just want to know, this is an extremely successful and popular and nationally recognized art show. We're very fortunate to have it in Benita Springs, and I think it's a great idea having it downtown. But what are we going to do about parking? Because it is very successful. So where are we going to have the parking for this?
Hi. Laura Taylor, Communications Manager. We're looking to use the same parking areas that we use for other special events currently. We do project that we will have a larger population to attend these events, but it should occur over the span of a few different hours, not all at one time. So we think that the parking that we have will accommodate the patrons for this event.
We've, we've already crunched those numbers, Martha?
Yeah.
Yeah. And the Art League and staff and the Sheriff's Department, we all feel as though, quite frankly, there'll be less, less traffic and less parking than at the usual Celebrate Benita, something like that, where everybody comes all at the same time.
Our numbers indicate that a very successful event at Riverside Park all at once can run you upwards of 5,000 or 6,000 people. They're there all at once. They're leaving all at once. And so that makes it sometimes difficult for parking, even for our city events. The numbers we've received is that the arts festival could be looking at 10,000 attendees, but spread over two days. And so that provides us a lot more opportunity to have ample parking.
And plus, the people who come to the, the festival, they don't come and stay all day. They come for about an hour or two hours or so.
Correct.
They leave. And so there's a big rotation there. So, but anyway, we've had a lot of discussions about this and, and there's a lot of logistics to work out, but we are really confident in that we can do it.
And, and I know they also have people who have volunteered to help park in, in the previous events, and I think this is a winner and I'd make a motion to approve.
You have a motion to approve?
I just wanted to make sure that...
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second.
Just wanted to make sure that was covered on parking. Thank you, sir.
Oh, yeah. There's a lot more than that to be covered.
Yeah.
And any discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Slackta?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilwoman Simmons?
Aye.
Councilwoman Simons?
Aye.
Councilman Longheart?
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh?
Aye.
I want to thank Susan and her husband Barry for, for working with us on this. I think this is going to be awesome. It's going to be great for the Art League, great for Benita Springs. You haven't seen anything yet. This is going to be great. So thank you very much, Susan, for all your help. And Laura, thank you. And Arlene, thank you too. Okay, what do we got next here?
Public hearing.
Public hearing. All right, Audrey.
That's correct. And I will start it and then leave it for John Dolmar or Jackie Gensen.
He's here.
There we go. I see her. Okay, if I can read the title block into the record. This is a transmittal process for the YMCA Comprehensive Plan Amendment. And if approved, it will transmit the ordinance to the Florida Department of Economic Opportunity, DEO, through the expedited state review amendment process. The title block of the ordinance reads as follows, and I have reviewed the affidavit of publication. It is legally sufficient. This is an ordinance of the City of Benita Springs, Florida, amending a portion of the City of Benita Springs Comprehensive Plan as adopted by Ordinance Number 02-16 as amended so as to amend the future land use map for Amendment CPA 13-04897 BOs, known as YMCA Comprehensive Plan Amendment, which is located in Section 31 Township 47 South Range 26 East to redesignate approximately 26.99 more or less acres of land from density reduction groundwater resource to public and semi-public, which is a future land use category, providing for transmittal to the State Land Planning Agency, providing a conflicts clause, severability clause, providing for an effective date, and other purposes. On May 9th, the local planning agency held its public hearing for the amendment and authorized it to go forward. At this time, Jackie Gensen will provide the staff presentation and backup as to the case. I did receive one telephone call, well, actually two, but one from Bobby Lee Gruninger? The Sierra Club, Calusa. She realized it was on the agenda. We did send her the backup information. So she will be commenting most likely before the public hearing process in August if this goes forward.
Okay. Jackie?
Good evening. For the record, Jacqueline Gensen. The comprehensive plan amendment before you is a city-initiated amendment. And a lot of you were here back in 2001, but this resulted as part of the rezoning process for the YMCA. And the rezoning was approved and there were special future land use considerations made so the YMCA could be approved. But after the zoning was approved, there was a private lawsuit that was filed and as part of the settlement agreement, there was a condition that this property was to be removed from the DRGR land use category into a more appropriate land use category. Since that time, it has not occurred. So this is why the city has gone ahead and done a city-initiated amendment to bring this property into compliance with that agreement. We are not party to that agreement, but the city went ahead and is transmitting this amendment to support that agreement. Staff has selected or recommended that this land use category be changed to public, semi-public, so it would support the uses that are currently existing there today and what the zoning ordinance supports. We have met before this application was processed through our office. We did meet with the Regional Planning Council and the Water Management District just to give them a heads up that we were filing this and why we were filing this, and they had no reservations at that time. I also have spoken in general to the Department of Economic Opportunity just to let them know what we, what we were doing. And they understood that it was more so to memorialize the existing uses that were there. So staff did provide a presentation. We do have some backup and, and some maps. I do have Mike Kirby here, who is also here if you have any questions, but staff recommended approval, LPA recommended approval. So we're asking if you will recommend approval so we can transmit to the state.
Okay. Okay. Questions from council? Anyone? Go ahead.
I talked to Bobby Lee Hasty, who is now Gruninger and, right, who was a signatory on the settlement agreement. And she said, "That's not what I understand the settlement agreement to mean, but regardless, there's other things in the settlement agreement that all these 10, 11 years, we haven't done any housekeeping on otherwise, which were brought up before, like the kiosk and the environmental, this or that." Okay. I've got three concerns. One is, under the comp plan, because I think the settlement agreement might be mistaken, that's why. Under the comp plan amendment that it says that it wants to comply with a comp plan amendment, and it should change it and take it out of the DRGR designation. It actually, in the flu map, it's not out of the DRGR, in the future land use map, it still is considered DRGR. But in Policy 1.1, 1.21 on page 1-27, the DRGR use includes, everybody here knows this, but I'm going to say it because I think that we don't have to change it. I think it still complies. Agricultural, residential, maximum density 1/10. Public uses. So I don't know why we need to change it to a public use if the DRGR already accommodates this use. Here's my concern, three. One is that, boy, did we, our town went berserk over this issue. And two, the mayor remembers, he was serving at that time. And the argument was made, because I went to those meetings, the argument was made that this was a use that the DRGR could accommodate, the YMCA. Okay. Number two, my concern is, is I, I know this isn't being brought forward by the Y, but I understand the Y is looking to have a school at some point. And I would say that's probably a public use, but in the, in the settlement agreement, it says that this YMCA agrees that it shall be used for a YMCA and YMCA ancillary uses. So if there's any concern that, you know, the YMCA wouldn't be able to have a school, I could say we could argue that a school there would be a YMCA ancillary use because they're forwarding that, that. And my third concern is that if we change this one, and then in the future, they allow, well, there's two concerns about this. Allow a use for a school, this would give precedent, even though the, the agreement says we don't want to give any precedent in the DRGR, allowing this to be a precedent for future schools in the area because there was a zoning for a school and that was denied over on Benita Grant. And the, the last concern is, if we didn't have this settlement agreement prior to the new folks that are at the YMCA, we would have lost that YMCA. And if we change the use on that, I'm not sure that this YMCA could sell it for some on that, I'm not sure that this YMCA could sell it for some other purpose. You might maybe make the argument that the purpose that it has now could be sold, but for another purpose. But I'm concerned about changing something. This settlement agreement saved our Y, and I am concerned about changing that. So, that's my argument, and I, for right now, I don't have enough information, and I'd just like to ask that maybe we table it to a time certain where I can get more information about this and be more informed.
Well, let's see if we can split these questions up. In your opinion, does the property need to be, the comprehensive plan, need to be changed in order for them to do a public semi-public school there?
The DRGR land use category, if you look on the staff report on Page 6 of 13, it will give you the land use classification for DRGR, and public uses is one of those uses on a limited basis. But the reason why this amendment was initiated is because of the settlement agreement. I mean, the settlement agreement, which is Attachment B in your packet, if you look on Page 3 of the settlement agreement, 3B, it says YMCA shall support the adoption of the initial comprehensive plan by the City of Benita Springs, such that it would remove and rezone the property from DRGR, with the intent that the YMCA could not be used as a precedent for other development in the DRGR, according unincorporated Lee County. So, the condition says, as I read it, I mean, I'm not an attorney, so I'll probably defer to legal, where to remove it from the DRGR.
It anticipates removing it from the DRGR.
Correct.
So that it does not make a precedent.
Correct.
It just, they just never got around to doing a comprehensive plan amendment, right?
It's my planning interpretation, but I defer to legal.
And let me talk about a little bit illegal. We had what we call an ARLUPA, Religious and Land Use Institutionalized Persons Act claim, that went up because another facility that was, wanted to have like a gymnasium in the DRGR, it would have been rejected but for the fact that we had the YMCA, and because that was a secular use that had that use, we had it granted to the nonsecular, obviously a church, because I'm talking nonsecular. It's important to look at what are the two policies. Jackie pointed out on Page 6, you have the DRGR. Policy 1.1.18 is the policy for public and semi-public, and it's a much more narrow policy than the DRGR, in that it's intended to recognize existing locations of and provide sites for public and semi-public uses such as institutional or governmental buildings, schools, libraries, nonprofit recreational facilities, and public and private utilities. So, clearly, a YMCA would be within the public and semi-public facility use as an easier reach, but going into the DRGR, it's a much more difficult, and that's where staff, as Councilmember Simons pointed out, it was a very divisive staff report, because at that point, staff was debating whether to do it or not, as far as is a YMCA a public facility? And it was a debatable, and they said, "Well, we'll leave it for council to make that ultimate call," and because you had a new council, and they wanted to make that ultimate call, and you had, as Councilmember Simons recalls quite well, it was very divisive, and there were a lot of people, and obviously, we did receive one lawsuit, of which there was a settlement that was, you know, agreement saying, "We'll take it out." I think one of the reasons it was not taken out, and I could not remember all the different reasons, was one, the YMCA, neither YMCA or Sierra Club, who was the other party, was pushing it at that moment, but also the concern of it creating kind of a donut hole in the midst of the DRGR property, although there are some other public facilities out in that region, I believe, that's out there.
Okay, regardless, because of those reasons there, pretty good rationale, and I believe, you think that it's still best to go ahead and have this done?
Correct, because it does, as Audrey said, it does narrow, more narrowly define the types of public uses or semi-public uses that we would think is-
So, by changing it from not being in the DRGR, you're less likely to allow, make a precedent than you would be by allowing other uses on the piece of property that were borderline and still being in the DRGR?
Correct.
Okay. Anyone else like, anything else? Anybody? Yes?
Okay, so, the item 3, 3B, which you're saying that we're going to help comply with the settlement agreement, which, by the way, the city didn't sign on to, so, I don't know why we're trying to fulfill that, but anyhow. YMCA shall support the adoption of the initial comprehensive plan by the City of Benita Springs. Okay, that's the first, and the sentence continues, "such that it would remove the rezoned properties from DRGR." Well, the initial comprehensive plan doesn't remove this property from the DRGR.
Correct. I don't know why that happened.
So, I mean, it's like, the sentence is flawed. It doesn't remove this rezoned-
Yes, you're correct, and quite frankly, the Sierra Club or YMCA could have asked to enforce the settlement at that time, did not ask to enforce the settlement. I do not know the reasons. I don't, I mean, that's not relevant. The issue that is relevant is that this is a housekeeping item.
Sure.
Whether or not to do it, that's council's pleasure, and quite frankly, we also have that the hearing date, assuming we get an expedited review process by the Department of Economic Opportunity, I had to remember what E stood for, that's not until August 7th, so you still have August 7th and August 21st for hearings.
Ben?
Yes?
Can I just ask that we have another, till the next council meeting before we decide to transmit this, just so that we can all become familiar with the issues, because people who were in the settlement agreement weren't contacted, it wasn't just Bobby Lee Hastings.
Sure.
I mean, one is deceased, Meg Hutchins, you know her quite well, mayor, and that was his first opponent when he ran for office, and Fran Stalling, blah, 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 and I think the Wildlife Federation, I think Nancy Peyton's still down in Collier, but I would like to hear from them. I mean, your argument's very good, that this would actually constrict the use, but my concern is, I don't want to lose that Y, and if there's any way that this might affect that, a school? I support having a school there, that's a great idea. You know, if they want to have a charter school, I think that'd be perfect, but I know that some been, some talk about that, but I just ask that we just review a little bit longer, if that's possible, and they can convince me if need be.
Counsel, do you have any more other comments?
I would support that, Martha. It just, what's the timing issue on this?
There's not necessarily a timing issue. What will happen again is, once council votes to transmit, you know, we'll go ahead and transmit to the state, and they have a 30-day clock to give us comments, so it really doesn't impact our timeline. It's not a time-sensitive issue.
Next meeting.
Yeah, date certain, as long as the, you know, some of the parties can become familiar with what the issues are, we can too.
Well, I mean, so there's a motion and a second to table till-
This will be continued to a date certain of June 19th? You want to bring this back on the agenda at that time?
Yeah, could I just ask that the community development just try to contact some of the folks that were in there?
So, we're continuing to time certain, so we do not need to re-advertise?
Yes, correct.
I beg your pardon.
I'm sorry.
Please let me run the meeting. Thank you, thank you. Yes, we made the motion to continue this. Now, we're going to have discussion. What I want to know here is that, just kind of point out, that being what it is, you know, for us to want to bring people table, having a concern that the YMCA is going to want to turn it into something else other than it is, is a different set of, it seems a little divisive in itself. I mean, when it's, if you look at it, you can see that it's a parking lot in a building, in a playground, in a soccer field, and, you know, it doesn't have that DRGR look to it. Does it really need to be that period? And if we're going to withhold, you know, the, what should be, you know, the comprehensive plan change that should be done, just so we can try to keep it as one thing, I'm not sure how ethical that is, anyway. Not that yanking the YMCA out from under the ethos is ethical.
Correct, and I don't know how legally the implications are to do something that's not, or to violate the settlement agreement, but of course, it hasn't been done in about 12 years, anyway.
We're not a party to the settlement agreement.
So, we're not a party to it.
Correct.
But anyway, but-
It's more of a private matter.
But, you know, like I said, I mean, calling the environmental groups to the table to fight a battle that, I don't, over what? Over keeping something in the DRGR that really-
Correct.
Doesn't look like it needs to be in there? I don't know.
Yeah, at the time, I think it was definitely more of a concern, but now that the facility is there, it's been established, it's been there for about 12 years.
Okay, well, let's go ahead and call the question. I've got no problem with, as long as the, and the YMCA, the YMCA hasn't asked for this to be done, right?
Right.
Okay?
Yeah.
Good. Anybody, anything else? Roll call.
Mayor Nelson?
I beg your pardon, hold on one second. Yes?
Public comment?
Okay.
That would be for transmitting?
Okay, we'll have public comment. I need to have that marked a little better on here. Anyone wishing to speak on this matter, please come forward.
Okay, now, this is going to be transmitted to somebody else that can sit, in judgment of your decision, is that right?
Public hearing, not public comment.
This is going to go off to the state somewhere, and they might turn it down or have a problem with it.
Yep.
Well, go ahead and do it now, and get it over with.
All right, thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, I'm Deborah McLean, publisher of The Banana Peel. I think that perhaps you are being intuitive, and that perhaps they are landlocked, and their future goal of a high school needs more land, so you've probably just had a gut instinct there, and that's all I have to say on this issue.
Thank you. Anyone else this time? Please come forward.
It's restricted to this item only. Thank you very much, Ed.
Anyone else this time? Okay, public comment, which is not marked on the agenda, is over.
Let's review the motion.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Let's review the motion.
You want to review the motion. The motion is to go ahead and-
To continue to June 9th, to a time and date, June 18th?
19th.
19th, I'm sorry, I thought I said June 19th. To a time and date certain, to have, hold the hearing, just continuing this public hearing process.
Okay, it's the public hearing process, but we haven't even, what I thought was before us today was just to tell you to commence the transmittal process.
That's correct. So, we're not going to transmit it when you're ready.
But telling you to commence the transmittal process is part of the transmittal process?
That's correct, and then the next part would be the two ordinances.
Well, did council tell you to bring this before us to begin with?
No.
Then how could this be part of the transmittal process?
It was added.
It wasn't, it hasn't been, the council, if council hasn't told you to go forward with this, then it shouldn't even be on here, should it?
Was part of a comprehensive plan amendment process, state statute requires that you have to transmit an amendment to the state for processing?
I understand that, but, for further reference, we're going to vote on this sooner or later, but for further reference, it would seem like it would come before us as an item, and it would say, "Look, look, we need to do this, do you guys mind if we go ahead and go through this transmittal process?" That's what I thought this was, and we'd say, "Yeah, go ahead and commence with the transmittal process," and then you would come back, and we'd have the public hearing and whatnot. And, but, did we skip something here? But, don't answer that question. We're going to just go on with this, anyway.
Bring it back.
You okay?
Uh, no.
Okay, yes.
Not okay, because I'm not sure where we are legally on this transmittal now.
Yeah, well, we haven't done anything yet, so.
Well, that's right, we're about to do something.
Yeah, we're about to authorize it to be brought before us.
That's where I think we need to be.
Future date.
Bring it back.
You make your point.
Yeah, so-
It's on June 19th.
On June 19th, so we're going to go ahead and authorize this to be brought forward on June 19th.
And that's where it should have been previously.
Yes.
That's correct.
I would think so, but we won't argue that.
Okay.
Because it's going to accomplish the same thing.
Everybody will be happy.
You ready?
Yep, we're ready.
Roll call.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilman Simmons?
Aye.
Councilwoman Simons?
Bring it back in June.
Yep.
Councilman Longheart?
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh?
Aye.
Councilman Slackta?
Aye.
Thanks, mayor. I really appreciate you giving me time.
Staff will talk later, and if I'm wrong, I'm wrong, okay?
It's fine.
Cool. All right, hey, as luck might have it, public comment on just any other thing you want to talk about. At this time, would anybody else like to come forward and talk about whatever you want to?
I think I would.
Basically. That's you, Ed.
I'm going to jump up and say, "That last item was clear as mud," and then, "Thank you."
Wasn't it, though? You're quite welcome, our pleasure.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Ed Fitzgerald. The subject, by the way, is the BSU franchise that the city issued to them. I made a presentation last night at the BSU Board. We're talking two people, BSU Board and the RCS, is the Resource Conservation System. I'm going to read the rest of it. "I'm Ed Fitzgerald, live in Benita Springs. I believe that the Benita Springs Utility is in violation of the provisions of the City of Benita Springs franchise. BSU's failure to abide by the provisions of that franchise is manifested in an agreement with Resource Conservation System that has resulted in the member owners of BSU from having access to reclaimed irrigation water for over 20 years. A review of the Major Springs franchise and the BSU practices discloses the following. The required county approval for the RCS agreement was not obtained in 1991 when they made the agreement. Therefore, that agreement has no legal validity, then or now, and proceeding without permission of the Lee County Commissioners was wrong in 1991. It's stated in the franchise that any assignment, transfer, or other use of the privileges granted in the franchise must have their approval. Resource Conservation Systems also is not a member as defined in the franchise, and is not entitled to services of the utility company. RCS does not return sewage to BSU plants for processing. The sewage that is processed at the BSU plants had been returned from member owners' homes at a substantial cost to them. It is the property of the homeowner. The 20-year discounted price of irrigation water to RCS is 27 cents, has not been changed in 20 years, and is different than the posted price of 34 cents. It's a differential price prohibited in the franchise. And the franchise also states that Benita Springs Utilities shall provide an infrastructure to distribute water throughout the franchise area to each and every home. Benita Springs Utilities has never done that. The City of Naples has 90 miles of such irrigation piping in the streets, and such infrastructure is typical of most utilities in the company, in the country. RCS was formed in 1985 to sell irrigation water. They did not have an agreement until 1991 with Benita Springs Utilities to sell water. I don't know where they could possibly get this water, but I believe that BSU was supplying water to RCS in 1985, prior to the agreement, and prior to telling the community that BSU paid for the piping in the street. I don't believe BSU paid for it. Just one sentence. The items in this memorandum indicate that Benita Springs Utilities franchise has not been enforced for the purpose it was granted. It was granted to serve the members of Benita Springs only. The City of Benita Springs should reevaluate the franchise validity for continuance. I thank you. You can answer any questions, but I thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Please come forward.
Deb McLean with The Banana Peel. When Benita Bay came to town, it was when I-75 was planned, and they knew they were going to expand the airport, and the conceptual plan for Benita Bay was drawn and brought to us from, I believe, a California firm, which was strong on conservation. It's 2,500 acres in total, I believe, and has very low density over there, and lots and lots of green space, wide, heavily landscaped boulevards. It's a lovely community. They just planned their infrastructure with forward thinking. That's why the pipes were there first. Benita Springs Utilities had to catch up. They were young and fledgling, and not from the big city, so the pipes were there first, but not by any evil design, just by good planning.
Thank you very much. Anyone else this time? Please come forward. Seeing none, that's it for public comment for now, and we are down to the city attorney's report. Audrey, what do you have for us today?
Thank you. Before we start with the agenda items, I just want to introduce Jeff Petrie. Jeff is my second law clerk that you're meeting. He is a student, third-year student, 3L, at Ave Maria Law School. Jeff is working on several projects. You guys can ask him some of the questions if you wish, not tonight, but if you have questions while he's here, please feel free to do so.
Welcome, Jeff.
Welcome.
Welcome, Jeff.
And I will be having him later on in the summer, along with Nadine Hildebrandt, the other law clerk, doing actual presentations before council. To actually go into the agenda items, I have several ordinances here. I just want to do a reminder that some of the backup on the green sheets were reversed, so we'll just make sure we have the right backup if you have questions. The first ordinance, and they're all permission to advertise, the first ordinance is amending Chapter 1. The amendments are pretty minor in this case, although they do look a little lengthy. We're re-adding definitions, revising the penalty provision, adding code enforcement, making some monogrammatical change, and there was one provision that, when drafted by the consultants, was not consistent with the city charter as to the repeal process. I just, when I, I just want to make sure it's consistent in both documents, both the city charter and the land development code. So, unless we amend the charter, which takes a referendum, I'd like to have it so the language is the same. So, that's the first one. The ordinance will be advertised for a first reading and public hearing on July 17th, and a second hearing on August 7th, with local planning agency review on July 11th.
Okay. Counsel, permission to advertise?
So moved.
Have a motion and a second? Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Simmons?
Aye.
Councilwoman Simons?
Aye.
Councilman Longcart?
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh?
Aye.
Councilman Slakda?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye. Okay, carry on.
Thank you, hold on one second. Let's put something here. The next is another ordinance. Now, this is a very small amendment, but it's very important to a lot of people. This particular ordinance is amendment to our minimum lot dimensions in the agricultural. The most important part of this is, again, this is kind of trying to fix items that where we had a comprehensive plan saying one thing, and we had a land development code saying another. In this particular matter, people who were consistent with the comprehensive plan were not able to develop certain agricultural lots, because even though they met the lot death because they owned the adjacent property, they weren't able to do so. There's two amendments here, there's an amendment to the actual table and a note within the table, and the other amendment, which is very important on this, and it's relatively minor, on 4-3273 subsection A, page 3, we're taking out one sentence. And that sentence said, "A lot which conforms to the density provisions will not be eligible for the exemption," in other words, be treated as a lot of record. So that's the part, did I explain that well enough, John? Okay.
Page 1?
On page 3. So if you look on the top of the page, you'll see section 3273. If you go down to section A.
Oh, you know what, I'm in the mixed up category.
This is page 3 of 4.
She was just on the off.
And this was one of the ones that had the mix-up, where the items for B got mixed up with C, and the items for C got mixed up with B.
Okay, you're just, but you're just.
Conforming lots, correct.
You're just asking for permission to advertise.
That's correct.
Okay. Counsel, what's your pleasure?
Just a quick question.
Go ahead.
This is really beneficial for the current owners of property, is it not?
Yes, there's been.
That's all I need to know. Motion to approve.
There we have motion to, yeah, motion to approve sending it to the first reading. So there's been a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Roll call.
Councilwoman Simons?
Aye.
Councilman Longcart?
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh?
Aye.
Councilman Slakda?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilman Simmons?
Aye.
Okay, what do you got now?
The next is probably the more important one, I'm probably going to have some of this done by John Dolmer, or Jackie Gensen, or Jay Sweet. Again, I'm looking in the room to see who's here with me. This is changes to the old 41 redevelopment standards. There's several changes in this particular ordinance. You'll see that there will be amendments to Chapter 4, the redevelopment overlay. There's also the felt's overlay, because again, you want transitioning in the area. And there's also the sign ordinance, and some changes in the sign ordinance. One of the things, just to bring contemporary into the meeting, earlier in the meeting, Susan Bridges from the Art League brought up the term "placemaking." Remember?
Yep.
She said that, and it was a new term. On page 21 of this particular ordinance, you'll see placemaking is actually listed in that in the definition of walkability. Placemaking is a planner's term, and I'll have to look at them, but it is trying to bring this ordinance more into, more contemporary, as we're developing, we're seeing a better vision or a stronger vision. With that being said, I also want to point out, there is a part of this ordinance that is missing right now, it is a very important part, it's Exhibit 5, which would be on page 30, right now currently page 30. It says, "Insert here." Exhibit 5 would be actual design standards, trying to tell developers or tell architects what the interest is in. The problem that had occurred is, I think, we were focused on trying to give a lot of creativity with architects, and that's great if you have an architect or you have a builder who wants to use that creativity, it's not so great when they want to do the least amount possible.
It's fair to say that when we developed these, and we've worked for these a long time, we had all the best intentions that things should look a certain way. And then to our great surprise, people actually have decided to start building down there. And in the process of that, we're finding that some of this stuff doesn't work, right?
Correct.
And that's why we're here.
Yes, we are here because we did have a project come in, our first redevelopment project, which is Family Dollar, which brought to light so many holes and some challenges in our code, and this is a quick measure for us to go ahead and correct some of those items right now. And then once we know where the old 41 site improvements are going to be, then we're going to probably do another major overhaul for the downtown section, looking at a form-based code. But this is an intermediate stop, so just in case another project comes in the door, we have standards in place where we get the type of development that we want, where it meets the intent of our overlay. Right now, the regulations are a little loose.
Because the intent and the purpose, although it's very clear, I think, to most everybody, including yourselves, the intent and purpose wasn't sufficiently.
Correct.
Supplanted by the actual regulation. So that's what you're trying to do there, right?
There wasn't enough guidance and guidelines, correct.
Okay, I just want counsel to know. Okay? Yes?
Yeah, are we approving something that says "Insert here," and there's nothing to insert?
This is just a request to advertise, so this will come before you again.
Okay.
And the LPA said yes.
We're not approving anything, other than to advertise.
Okay.
We're going to do something.
Well, you know, I've brought this up before, and Ben, you heard it, for almost seven and a half years now, but there were these very adorable little drawings in the original CRA under team plan.
Yes.
Which, you know, doesn't say anything about the greater, larger, but we never adopted them.
That's correct, and we looked at actually putting in Exhibit 5 the team plan drawings. That has been a discussion, and that might end up being at the end of the day, but staff thinks that there could be something better than the team plan, although team plan is very cute.
There are some elements in the team plan that were very sufficient, very applicable, but they did not necessarily match the new plan that was adopted as part of the comp plan, which is the RMPK plan, which is the current one.
And old Florida design could be kind of like what we got down there, Ben. I mean, old Florida had kind of what that looks like.
Well.
Part of our Exhibit G is to go ahead and put in some examples of, for retail buildings, this is what we're looking for, this is the massing, these are the storefronts we want to see. For residential, this is what we want to see, so they're guidelines, but they still have to go through our architectural review, because downtown requires a minor project review or a major, so they will go through, and Sam Vincent will review them to make sure they meet the intent of the design guidelines.
Yeah, and what you're asking for is permission to advertise, to go through this process, to give you a chance to look at some things and say, "Is this what?" We want to be sure, this is what you're looking for down there, and then that will have the opportunity.
And we'll try to, even though we have a mishmash of different designs that are on old 41 now, but some of the more architecturally pleasing, if there are, designs that are there, we'll try to say, "This is kind of what we want to look like," so we have a seamless kind of.
Correct.
Right.
Mayor, I'd like to move it forward.
A motion to move forward, a second?
Second, discussion.
In a second? I'll second it, discussion, go ahead.
You know, this came to us because we permitted a building. Is this, have we resolved that issue?
Yes, we actually have been working very closely with the developer and Family Dollar. They've been very cooperative in helping us get a better-looking building by doing some exterior enhancements, some additional landscaping, so they definitely have come a long way. We've worked very hard.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, hats off to them, and to staff for putting up with me. Anyway, there's a motion and a second. Any other discussion? And we look forward to seeing it back. Roll call.
Councilman Longcart?
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh? Councilman Slakda?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilman Simmons?
Aye.
Councilwoman Simons?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay, you have anything else for us?
Yes, sir.
Okay, we are up to the city manager's report, and he's got all kinds of good stuff for the girls and boys. No, I was talking about you. Your turn.
All right.
Was it really?
Thank you, Mayor. We've been, actually piggybacking on the discussion we just had, some of our challenges have been in dealing with people who want to develop and redevelop on, in the downtown area, in the old 41 area. Has been, it's difficult sometimes to really talk about what we're looking for. Sometimes the narratives in the codes really don't adequately address it. Obviously, there's holes here and there that we find when we actually try to apply the provisions of codes. And so what we thought might be helpful in terms of giving people a better idea of what we're looking for, for an old four to look, it's kind of one of those things where I see it, you know, I believe it, and I get it when I see it. We actually put together some renderings that we think represent the, represent what is meant by old Florida. And we are presenting this to council because we want to make sure that you're comfortable with what's being presented here, because if adopted tonight, this is something we can use in not only promoting that particular area and the vision that we see what it could be, but also in talking to developers that come up and down, come to town from time to time and talk about the kind of buildings they would like to do. We do believe there's going to be additional construction on old 41 in the downtown area. We know of landowners that are interested in moving forward on some product, and we want to make sure that there are building features that will help get their building lined up with that old Florida look, even though they're brand-new buildings. And with that, I'd like to turn this over to Director of Development Services, Arlene Hunter, to chat with you about just this.
Good evening.
Hello.
For the record, Arlene Hunter. As Carl mentioned, we've been discussing, and actually, we're very excited because we actually had two pre-application meetings this week for old 41 directly, and we've been working with Sam Vincent to look at designs for these existing structures and architectural things that we could implement on those properties to bring back the charm and character of what we're looking for. We worked with James Leacy and Sam Vincent to create some architectural drawings to actually display our vision. And what is before you here is a sample of a possibility for the Old Bamboo site. We wanted to stress that we're looking at reasonable densities, it is an urban core, but we're not looking to recreate, you know, six, seven stories, we're looking to keep within the three and four-story range. We are, some of the features you can identify is the color palette, the architectural features of the porches, you can see porticoes, there's emblems placed on awnings. There's importance to open space as well, that we feel it's important that when you increase those densities, that you have open air and open space. We want it to remain walkable, and we want to remain the open feeling of the river as well. So these are just some, we can use some of the features on these buildings, we're having discussions with potential applicants. One of the great things about the team plan is there are many architectural elements. What we want to do is actually create a menu of these items that folks can easily, like a cookie cutter, select which out of the menu they can place on their building, making it thereby easier for the developer as they come in, so they have a clear understanding of the vision that we're trying to achieve for the downtown. We also hope to use these images when we have opportunities to speak with folks about our downtown, that they understand where the council is looking and the direction we're trying to get to. The other image here is a potential roundabout by Pennsylvania and old 41. It is just a visioning image, it's not necessarily a fountain in the middle, there could be a public art piece that displays our history as well, but is to get an idea of the feeling that could happen. It's also to show you some imaging of how you can make public parking spaces at ground level, not needing to spend the expense of a multi-story parking facility, which we may not want to go to in the future, but making your public parking spaces attractive and approachable as well. So this is imaging that we use to assist when talking with folks, so that they understand the feel and the dimensions that we're trying to achieve. What we're looking from you all tonight is to get authorization to actually use this as our vision, so we can begin promoting it, and as well as we're in with the stopgap with the regulations that we'll be revising for old 41, that we can actually pull these in and use these images when we talk with folks, so they understand the direction that we're going in.
Good, all right. Counsel, any questions? Yes.
Okay, I like the color palette. Are we going to change that?
These are tones within the color palette.
Oh, is it? Okay. Because that's more what I had in mind, is a colorful, beautiful, non-brown, non-gray. Okay, color palette's good. I'd like to see if you're including a menu. I remember, I did that comp plan amendment downtown, we increased some densities, but we also included as part of kind of their mitigation was garden terraces, like vegetative roofs, if you do that, you get this. And I know it's a real difficulty with the non-conforming lots, we're trying to do some water management stuff through this downtown redevelopment program.
I have to interrupt for a second, because actually, we're not talking about that. Actually, what she wants to know, "Do you like the way that looks?" That's really the only question that we're talking about.
We're looking for you to look at those features, the imaging.
How we get there is going to be contained in that other document that you just approved going forward. This right here, is this the look, the feel, the purpose and intent, counsel, that you're looking for?
Well, vegetative roofs does have an effect on the look. I'm just wondering if council thinks that's, you know, roof gardens, whatever, is one of the things that you like. We put it in our comp plan, and the other thing is, is I like it, I think it looks great. I mean, just specifically, there's a 50-foot buffer across the river on either side, so we can't build up that close, because that's how that was zoned. That was a fight.
Yeah, this is for visual imaging, and actually, we're going to have further discussions about actually sustainability within the downtown.
Great.
So those will be images that we'll need to bring back as we move through the changes to land development code, so we'll be looking at all of those entities as we move forward, and sustainability would be one which would look at to the gardens and solar energies as well, so we can make it a sustainable and attractive downtown.
And Mayor, I like the pretty bridges and the pretty fencing. I would love our bridge at old 41 to be a beautiful bridge, instead of just, you know, concrete, and I think that's part of the vision here. Thank you.
Okay.
And I also like the fact there's no utility poles in here, so that would mean that you'd also have to bury your utility, which I like very much, and that's a sustainable practice.
Yes, counsel, any other comments? Yes.
I think, Mayor, this is just a snapshot of what we.
I like the lights.
Think that we would like to see.
It's difficult when we're discussing old Florida, many people have different things in their mind when they hear old Florida. So what we're asking for you is to just say, "Is this what you envision when we're using this term, so specifically old Florida, is this what the council visions for our downtown?"
Well, I think the look, the style, the roundabout, I like all that stuff. I don't know about the birds, but.
Don't worry, they'll go away, it's not too much.
But I do like that, this looks very, very nice, so.
Okay. Counsel, we're good? Good? Yes, yes, sir.
Let's move, and this is something that I've been around for 20 years now here in Benita Springs, and over the years, there's been many things that have happened, and the highway there, I don't like to use the word "old 41." Whatever you want to call it, they call it Hytman Boulevard, whatever. This is the first time that I have seen something since the initial one that was done years ago, but this is, I'm sure we can attract, if that would happen, we could attract hundreds of people to come to accomplish all the things that Martha, and Ben, and Dave, and everybody. So I think it's wonderful to see something like this, but what we got to do is spread it around so everybody can see it in newspapers, in color, and so forth, and I support you 100%.
It's an important promotional piece for us as well, as we bring the community in to buy into this vision as a whole, we all as a community need to buy into the vision.
Okay, and you're going to, you'll be using this as a tool.
As a tool, correct.
Yes, okay.
And in turn, we're making the changes to land development code, but when we meet with folks, and as I said, we are very encouraged, we actually had two pre-application meetings this week on old 41.
Really?
So we want to be able to show this vision to them, so they have a clear understanding. We actually walked one person through, they had a different vision in mind, and Sam was very helpful in walking them through different architectural features that would enhance their building, keeping in with, understanding the economic times, and the building is how it is now, we can work to do enhancements on it that keep within the old Florida. So we want to be able to use this vision and bring the picture out to show them as they move forward.
Good, good, and so we will be adopting this just.
We're asking you to adopt this as the vision, correct.
Reflective of the purpose and intent of the redevelopment, right? Okay, we have a motion and a second? Motion and a second, right? Okay, good, and more discussion, yes.[1797.24] And more discussion, yes.
Just one more. Just as part of the vision, this is just for the architectural style, right, pretty much?
Correct.
Okay, because you had to cut down a lot of trees to get this vision, and I know we have our historic trees down there, so.
Yeah, we'll be looking at all those elements. And of course, as we said, with that menu we develop, there will be different options that we can choose, where we're keeping sustainability, as well as the trees, in a mix of all the different uses. So if trees maybe had to go, maybe a rooftop garden is in exchange for those trees.
Yep.
To keep the density. So all these options will be brought back to you.
Well, thank you, Arlene. I really appreciate you working on this.
Okay. We have a motion and a second? Any other discussion? Roll call.
Councilman McIntosh.
Aye.
Councilman Slack.
Aye.
Mayor Nelson.
Aye.
Councilwoman Simons.
Aye.
Councilman Monckart.
Aye.
Okay. What else do you have for us?
Okay, Mr. Mayor, I want to bring forward a new proposal for our CRA effort. As those of you who were in attendance will recall, on May 6th, when we presented our CRA proposal to the Board of County Commissioners, there were a couple of commissioners who were particularly concerned about some issues with regards to where are they going to find the money, the increment, they're going to lose the growth, why should they do that? And they encouraged the county staff, and of course, I took it as a challenge to our staff, to come forward with alternatives to a CRA proposal. While I was concerned coming out of that meeting with the prospect of having to look for an alternative, as I spoke to staff, we came to the realization that actually an alternative could be better for us, and actually, better for the county. And I am prepared to show you a couple of options tonight to the original CRA proposal, and I'm looking for, coming out of this, your authorization to go to the county staff and to begin to vet these proposals, should the council so direct. So let me go into the presentation here real quick. You know, the commission was concerned, some of them, about, well, you know, what happens if we just do nothing? And I think we said, and the mayor said it most clearly, is that they cannot expect the projected growth without the improvements that we're looking for in the downtown area. And those infrastructure improvements, specifically, the big ones, are a centralized drainage system and on-street parking, so that we can free up a larger percentage of the developable property for people to build bigger buildings, drive the increment more, drive development, drive their ROI higher. And I think that's what we're trying to do. And also, then there was the CRA proposal, and now we're looking at alternative funding. So then we take a look at a little bit of a comparison between, now, this is just doing something versus doing nothing. And I think we can see pretty clearly that, and we took a 1.5% growth factor, okay? We said, if we do nothing down there, maybe, maybe, it'll grow 1.5%. It may not even grow that. But over the next 30 years, the county could expect maybe $6 million to come their way if we did nothing, at a 1.5% growth rate. The key is, is that in year 31, in year 31, they could only expect an annual amount of $413,000, all right? So the bottom line is, is that, yeah, they may get $6 million over 30 years, which is not much when you divide it by 30, but the bottom line is, is $413,000. Now, let's say we do a CRA. We took a look at that, and we say, okay, so over, and this assumes that the county gives us 95% of their increment, over the next 30 years, they could expect $1.7 million. Now, somebody could say, yes, that's a lot lower, however, than doing nothing. What in the world are you talking about? Take a look at the next row. The next row is in year 31, their annual ad valorem is going to be 2.9 million, not $413,000. So I think clearly, we can show doing something is better than doing nothing. Now, let's talk about their concerns. First off, you know, they didn't benefit much over the 30 years. We've talked about that. That's maybe $1.7 million in a CRA over those 30 years, that we may be setting a precedent for other CRAs, for other people to come in. If they say, yes, Bonita Springs, you can have a CRA or a CRA-like tool to redevelop your downtown, what keeps everybody else from coming into that and asking for the same thing? And then there's some talk about types of improvements that are consistent with county general fund projects. In other words, one of the commissioners was specifically concerned that they don't use general fund money for road improvements, and, oh, you're proposing some road improvements. And so, first off, you know, you can do road improvements with CRA or TIF monies. You can do that. Setting a precedent, I would challenge anybody to show the county that any other entity in this county has invested already $16 million in a particular area and is looking for the county's help to help us finish the vision. You won't find them out there. So the thing is, if somebody else comes in, if they've given Bonita Springs our deal, become our partner in this, if somebody comes up and says, we want a CRA now, too, the county has an answer. The answer is, you invest as much as you're asking for in a CRA, and then come back and see us sometime. Because we've put $16 million into the area already, we're asking for $16 million now. So what's the alternative proposal? The alternative proposal is, and actually, this was brought up by Commissioner Mann, actually, and that was, we get a loan from the county itself. We ask the county for $16 million, and that's in lieu of creating a CRA. This is an alternative proposal, all right? To make the improvements necessary to redevelop our downtown. And so, we would get the $16 million. I can tell you right now, one of their assistant county managers has said to me, we're only making a quarter of a percent on our money. I mean, everybody knows interest rates are way down. I suggested to him, and part of this proposal is, we say, we're going to pay you 2% on your money, instead of a quarter of a percent. Take it out of your investments, move it to us. The amount would be $16 million, 2% guaranteed, okay, on the unpaid balance through the balance of that 30 years, and length would not exceed 30 years. Now, how would we repay that? Well, first off, it'd be paid by the growth, all right? It's increment. We've already talked about that. I don't have to go into that much with you. The baseline for the increased growth would be 2012, all right? By the way, this would not be a CRA. This would be a TIF-like inter-local agreement with the county, all right? So they'd still have to pay in as if we were doing a TIF, all right? Base year would be 212, negotiated, all right? The city commits, as we would in a CRA, 100% of our increment for the entire repay period. Now, and also to answer some of the concerns about, well, we don't get any money during the 30 years, all right? Now, we've already showed that they might get $1.7 million, but I know they're looking for more, all right? So the bottom line is, is like, instead of asking the county for 95% of the increment, we ask them for 75% of the increment under this proposal. And that way, they're allowed to pick up more money on the growth as growth goes along. Now, we propose a minimum loan payment, okay, of the 2%, which would be $320,000, all right, starting off, and that's equal to 2% of $16 million. And we will use the increment from the growth to pay for that 320. But let's be clear, on this particular proposal, it'll be six years before the increment, counting the county's portion and the city's portion, would equal $320,000. The city, under this proposal, would be responsible for making up the difference, okay? And then payments would be made to the, payments would be made to the county within 30 days of receiving the payment, actually, from the county. So we'll go back to them. So then what we did was, we lined up the three choices, okay? The do-nothing, we've already talked about, the CRA, as originally proposed, we've talked about, and now the county loan, all right? This is scenario number one, as we're calling it. So the county's revenue now, that they're going to get through the 30 years, is now 25%, because again, we're, they're going to be investing 75% of their increment. Over the next 30 years, that's $8.6 million that they'll get of the growth, which is, again, 25% of the increase. It's five times as much as they would receive if they went the CRA route, okay? So we're responding to that objection and their concern. And then also, at the end of the 30 years, the payoff period, all right, their annual amount in '31, after we've already paid it off, they would start getting $2.9 million a year in additional ad valorem. And of course, that would consider to continue to increase over time, all right? We've talked about this. Now, the risks. Obviously, the risk is, we've got to make up the shortfall year to year. I've already done the calculations on that. When you take a look at years 1 through 6, where the increment's not going to pay for the loan interest amount of $320,000, over those six years, we would be paying into the pot $1.17 million. Taking out the increment portion leaves you with $947,000. So net, the city would be putting in $947,000 in years 1 through 6, until the increment catches up with that minimum payment of $320,000. And then, of course, the question is, well, what happens if the county calls the loan? All right? I mean, we invest money, we have money in our reserves to do things, and if the county says, here's $16 million, we're going to loan it to you, if they call the loan and they say, okay, Bonita Springs, we need our $16 million back, what do we do about that? First off, we will have already invested it in the ground, in our downtown. And so, what do we do about that? We're going to have to scurry around and try to find a loan in order to repay the county. But there's also some things. We could get the county to agree, if they decided to go this way, that the moment they called the loan, they have automatically authorized the establishment of a CRA, okay, in our downtown, with a base year of 2012. So we still have that growth built in. Now, although in this proposal, the city assumes a greater risk, because we're paying some money upfront, and they, really, we were doing that in the CRA as well, the downtown projects would be implemented sooner. The county receives, as I've indicated, 25% of their increment, so they're getting the growth throughout the system. The bottom line is, in that particular one, in this particular scenario, because we would not be doing a CRA, you do not have the paperwork, the bureaucracy, some of the findings we would have to make under a CRA proposal, this is easier, cheaper, and faster, in my opinion, than trying to establish a CRA. Now, I will tell you that, and I really don't mean for you to ask questions, I'm just going to go right on here. And now we get to the real numbers, and you're going to love this part. I won't ask you to read the numbers. I've already talked, as I indicated, to one of the assistant county managers, they're indicating they don't have $16 million to loan us. And so, the question then is, okay, so what do we do? What's our next option? And our next option is pretty much like the last one, except that we get the loan ourselves, we just go out and get the loan ourselves, all right? We have the capability of doing that. All we're doing, instead of paying the county back for a loan, we're paying a bank or a lending institution of some type back for the loan. But because our indications are that going through the loan process, realizing we're just not going to have a negotiated interest rate with the county of 2%, that actually, under this scenario, we may have to pay upwards of 4%, okay, on the loan. So what you've got is a situation under scenario one, which is what I just went over with you, we could pay that off in about 24, 25 years, okay? Under the scenario two, with a 4% interest, $16 million is still the same, and because we'd have to pay a higher interest rate, my proposal would be that the county would pay more of their increment into it, not less. So the county, instead of paying 75%, could pay 85% of their increment into the pot, so that we could continue to get this paid off in an appropriate amount of time. Under this scenario, you have a situation where, because of the 4%, your annual payment's going to be $640,000 minimum for interest only, okay? And that could run the very, that could run the first 10 years, all right? You've got the city putting in gross amount of $4 million for that during that period of time, against $627,000 in increment, for a net of about $3.4 million, or about $340,000 a year, all right? And again, that assumes the county at an 85% increment. This can be paid off in 27 years, according to our numbers, all right? So that is kind of what all of these numbers do. If you want to look through them, or if you have questions about these, we have put these numbers together because we, it shows on the left typically the kind of increment that you can expect, and on the right, typically, part of that is how you're going to pay off the debt service that is taken on. And so, I guess I'm looking for, first off, any questions you might have, answering the best I can, also whether or not the city council's interested in us moving forward with either or both of these proposals to the county level. I stand ready for questions, Mayor.
Good. Counsel, any questions for Carl, regarding any three of those, yes?
Carl, regarding the bank loan, is that firm, 4%? Is that what they're charging, or are you just estimating?
It is what, it is what they are paying right now for 15-year loans.
Gotcha.
All right? Or that's, I've asked for, I've asked a bank for, give me two to two and a half, they're like, that's below our cost of money right now. They couldn't even, they couldn't match that. All right? So personally, I like the 2% proposal better, but if the county's not going to loan us the money, then we have no money to borrow, from them at least.
Got it.
So, now, let me just say this. I'm showing you, as far as I'm concerned, worst-case scenarios here, all right? If our major objective right now, should the council want us to go with one of these alternative scenarios to a CRA, is we need to get the county to basically sign into, onto a local, inter-local agreement to be our partner in sharing the increment, their portion of the increment, into a pot to repay debt, all right? That's really what we need from them right now. It'll be up to us to figure out the absolute financing and how we're going to get that accomplished, and that may take a variety of different scenarios that we might still be able to figure out, where it's going to be less expensive.
Yeah, and I think that's important, really important for us to stress here, is that really what we're going for, and the county commission got confused on several issues here, that's where the, why don't we just loan you the money to do it, came from, because it's, you know, I was like, because we're not here to borrow money, we're here to get you to participate in paying it back. That's the important part. I think it's only fair, it's only fair if the county wants to continue to collect revenue from an area and to collect increased revenue as the area starts to perform, then they should have to commit to spending a little money, not spending a little money, at least commit to taking of active part in it. For, I think for them not to want to take an active part in this, and to want to just collect their money off the top, I don't think that's ethical. I really don't think it is.
I agree with you.
And so, I mean, that's the real basis of the argument. So I think that if, whichever way we use this, fine, you know, it's just, what we need is a commitment for them to use that TIF, to develop a TIF system right there. I think it's a sound system, and as I told them there, and Carl told them, all we're trying to do is make you money. That's all we're going to do, is make you money. Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, I would propose we call this TIF-light, just like government light.
I like that.
Yeah, they'll like that, you know, because it doesn't sound as bad as it could be. I'm not interested in getting the city into debt, so I really don't like the alternative, let's go out and get a loan. I don't like debt. I like to pay for stuff.
We're going to be in debt in all three of those.
Yeah.
That's all three of those represent debt.
I know, but the hopeful quest for county participation, and I think you're absolutely right, Ben, you know, somehow, something magical happened at the county level, that when we became a municipality, they can collect taxes but not invest? That doesn't make sense to me. When you pay for, when you pay for something, you should get something in return. More of the taxes on... More of the taxes on our tax bills go to school district and county. So, the school district is participating with us. They're here, and they're teaching our kids, and they're in town, and, but I really'd love to invite the county to be part of something that could be very special, and that's, I think you've come up with a great idea. But if they say they don't have money, I think they have some money.
Well, if, I mean, and that's just it. At this point in time, I think what we need from council is that, is for Carl, to give Carl the latitude to approach one of those three, if not a combination of those, but basically to concentrate. And I quite frankly think, there shouldn't be an asking, there should be an expectation
Yes.
that they participate in a TIF.
Yep.
Benita Springs, I mean, you haven't caught me complaining about the lack of services from Lee County. I have tried not to do that for fourteen years. But quite frankly, when we inherited this community as an incorporated city, it was left in not-too-good a shape, all right? And we didn't ask them for anything after that. We fixed it ourselves. But right now, by gosh, we're asking them to participate. We're expecting them to, and that's the way it's going to have to be.
That's the way it is.
And if they don't...
And what?
Well, so.
We're going to show them.
We'll let the chips fall where they may. Counsel, will you authorize Carl to grab this?
So moved.
Motion and second? Any other discussion?
Please.
Yes. Bill, go ahead.
Where are we going to get the money to pay the interest?
It's going to come out of whatever appropriate fund we can. For example, if it's, if it's a loan on road work, we'll probably do impact fees or gas tax.
Okay.
Other than that, it'll be general fund.
Okay.
But, but that's only for the amount of money that we have to pay over and above the increment in the first X number of years. After that, the increment should take care of that.
And you're comfortable with the, if we had our, if we could make a decision tonight, we'd be happy with a two percent deal, if we could...
I'm in love with the two percent deal.
[laughing]
But the county's not, see?
Start at one.
Well, anyway, I understand what your, the recommendation you made, and I support you in that recommendation. And I think we should proceed and, and work with the county, and sooner than later.
Yes, sir.
Good, thank you. Any other comments? Yes, Steve?
Quickly, I'm concerned about doubling our debt, first of all. That really bothers me. The, I guess the other question, maybe I missed a beat, sixteen million dollars, that number came from where?
Calculated based upon the cost of the projects we plan to do down there.
Okay. Has council seen all the projects that total up to sixteen million?
Yes, you have.
Okay.
But I'd be happy to send that again if you need.
No, I remember seeing it, but I can't remember the total number. So, we're not constrained in this loan from doing the things we want to do that may not fit with what a CRA would have allowed.
You are, you are constrained to, you are constrained to probably the projected projects, because anything over and above that is not in the sixteen million.
Okay. My question, is the CRA, the constraints a CRA would put on what we can do, are those different than what we have put in the master plan for using this money?
The answer is, is no. What we want to do with this money is the same under a CRA or under a alternative proposal. Maybe I'm not understanding the question.
That's a question.
Okay. So, that, that plan hasn't changed. I will tell you, however, that, given the amount of time that it's taken to get us even to this point, that if tomorrow, the county commission were to say, go ahead and do a CRA, we would find it difficult now to try to get the additional work done necessary to follow state statutes, and to make the findings we need to make, which we haven't talked a lot about. What's nice about the alternatives is that you don't have to make findings, you don't have to do all the bureaucratic work, you can get the money and get down to going to work.
Audrey's about to come out of her seat here.
I am. And if I can try to explain it maybe just a little bit differently, the statutes for CRAs are very broad, as far as the type of powers, what you can do with a CRA. The problem is in trying to get the delegating authority, because in order to create a CRA, you need the county's consent to create the CRA. The city staff wisely, I believe, has made it as narrow as possible, so it's a very, very site-specific, limited type powers that the city would have, as far as being very project-specific. So, I mean, as far as the CRA, you do have a lot of abilities to do things, but you also, as a city, have those abilities to do it anyway. If the county's not inclined in wanting to create a new CRA, following this alternative CRA proposal might make sense, you know, in creating just another way for the county to consider, you know, getting in this partnership.
Thank you. Just a couple more questions. When we, when we start into the next budget cycle, have the revenues projected to the point where we're talking about a sixteen million dollar loan and repayment?
No, not right now.
Okay. And I'm only concerned because there are too many cities going under, states ready to go under. Which has the least level of risk for the city, the CRA or the loan?
The, the alternative scenario number, number one, the two percent, probably has the least amount of risk, because under scenario two, you double up on your interest payments per year, and so those amounts are significantly higher. However, I will tell you that because of prudent financial judgments over the years, the city is in very good financial shape, and we are seeing an uptick in our revenues. And so, we feel comfortable that we could make the commitments that are proposed here, and still be in good shape.
Well, we've been talking about CRA for quite a while, and I'm okay with that. I guess, I don't know, I'm concerned about, I'm concerned about revenues now, and this, these initial payments, and how we're going to get them done. The, I don't, I'll second Councilman Longcard's motion, but there, my reservations are pretty strong, that, you know, we're taking on some risk here that I'm not comfortable with.
Well, let's let Lisa address some of those concerns.
Well, I'm going to inject here for one second, though, but because it's, it's very ironic, and I understand the conversation, but this is the same conversation the county commission's going to have. And this is the same conversation, except we were sitting over there. When we went to the county commission, they're like, oh, I don't know. I don't know if we can afford to allow you to have that TIF money, because we want it. We're counting on the TIF money to pay our bills. And of course, we're telling them, look, if we don't get it, we don't have parking in downtown. If we don't have parking, and we don't have stormwater, nobody's building. And so, you're not going to get the increment, because it won't exist. So, then I, so here we are. So, what's your solution? It's kind of a chicken and egg thing. Is there risk? You bet. You bet. But there was risk when we borrowed money for all the roadwork we did, and boy, look where we're at because of that. We've got some debt, but by God, we got roads. We got, and we've got practical problems. So, it's a, it's a real concern. It's a thing to be concerned about, but I think it's a good plan. But anyway, go ahead.
No, and I'm not disputing the plan and what's happened in the past, I'm concerned about the future. But if you go to the county with the plan, and they say, no way on two percent, are you coming back here to us, or are you, what's going to happen?
Well, as I understand it, from the proposed motion, is that you're giving me authority to go up there and work the best deal I can, within the parameters that I've already talked about tonight. In other words, I'm not going to go up there and go, all right, I'm going to borrow this money for seven percent, you know, and hopefully, you're going to pay eighty-five percent, and they're going, no, we're only paying fifty, you know? I think the motion is to kind of let me go up there and see what we can do on alternative deals.
You've been, you've been around this business a long time. Is this a workable deal? I mean, is this, are you going to, the county, I have found the county too interested in helping us recently, but, and I don't mean that as blandly as I said it, probably, but is this a workable deal for you, or are we giving you, do you have the right ammunition to go up and get this kind of thing?
Yes.
All right.
I do.
I need to know.
And plus, plus, you know, I don't do anything like this without running it by this lady standing right next to me here, because she's very outspoken. She may talk to you nice, but, no, she's a sweetie all the time. But she's outspoken when she thinks, like, I've got a crazy idea, and this ain't going to work, so.
Okay. Thank you. That answered my question.
Did you, did you want any further?
No, I second the motion.
All right.
Okay, yeah, and the motion is to, the main thing that we're fishing for is a TIF, right?
Right.
You know, how, where we go get the money, or who gives us the money, that's the other part of the question. But having the county participating, paying back a loan, whether it's a staggered loan, five million for first five years, whatever that ends up being, that's later to be determined.
Well, enough, if I might add to that real quick, Mr. Mayor, what's important, too, is if we can work, if we can get an interlocal for TIF, for their portion.
Right.
All right? TIF Lite. We don't have to go through all of this other bureaucratic issue, because if we were given the okay for a CRA right now, and we couldn't get all of the work done necessary to establish that CRA, yet in this calendar year, we would lose an entire year of growth, okay? Of an entire year of increment, because we're looking to negotiate and establish January one of twelve, or I'm sorry, December thirty-first of twelve being that, that date.
Okay. Any other comments? Yeah, let me go back to Martha, and I'll come right back to you, Bill.
I have a question for Lisa. We already have payments that we're making on a bond. Can you just tell me, how much is that annually? I know it changes.
Two million five hundred and sixty thousand.
Yeah, two million five hundred and sixty thousand. Good for you. And, like Mr. Longcard, and the term is...
It's up in twenty-one.
We have ten additional years?
Ten more years?
Oh, yes, yes.
Nine more years?
Eight, eight or nine years, right?
Yes.
Eight years, two and a half million dollars maybe a year, and then decreasing. Okay, so, I am not interested in borrowing money from a bank, or, I don't know, we're at three percent on that, aren't we, Mr. Longcard?
Two.
Two and a quarter. Is there any way to extend that bond if we, if the county goes, you know? I really, and with the mayor, we need their participation. We live in Lee County. We send them our money. And they should be part of a great investment, because, and I think we've got some support there. They asked us, you know? Go check out something else, see if we, because it's very expensive for them to have a CRA, and it's less expensive for them to do this. And I think, and it's less expensive for the money for everybody. So, the money doesn't cost as much for them, for us, da-da-da-da. So, I think this is really a brilliant plan you two cooked up here, and I like TIF Lite, you know, let's take off and get this thing going.
Yeah, it's important to remember that we're just going up there to get them to participate in paying back a loan. Carl will come back then and figure out, hey, look, here's the best I could find out. You guys still want to do it? You know what? We extended, we called our bonds, and we went back and got an extra ten million, or whatever it ends up being. That's what, that's what she's going to go fishing for next. Bill?
To Steve's question, when we, when the city borrowed the money, the thirty-six million back then, it was between four and a half and five percent in interest, and then the stroke of genius.
Call the recession.
Well, yeah, but then the negotiating skills of the staff was able to redo it for two and a quarter percent, and we're done in two thousand and twenty-one with that money, principal and interest. And anytime you can borrow money, if you, I shouldn't say, this is a public meeting, but anytime you can get somebody else's money at two percent, you don't want to turn that down, if, when you have something of this magnitude.
Okay.
If I might just add to this, because it goes to the issue of the county's participation. Under the second alternative proposal, which is, I'll just call it the four percent proposal, okay? The county, the county will be putting in, over the payback period, twenty-nine and a half million dollars, all right? So, it is significant at eighty-five percent that we try to get them to participate, because this is not like just taking on debt for the city. We have a big partner, hopefully, in repaying it back, and that's the key on this, all right? Because while the county is, and this is all public information, they're going to hear it, they're going to know it, they can figure it out themselves. You know, while the county on the four percent is putting in twenty-nine and a half million dollars, we're putting in seven point eight million, okay?
That's a lot of money.
On that debt.
But again, guess who's going to get the best return on their investment?
They are.
The county. The county's going to get seventy-five percent, eighty percent of the money back.
That's right.
Unbelievable. We're going to get, whatever.
And it has to do with the millage rates. The difference is in the millage rate.
Yeah, that's exactly what it is, okay?
Right.
All right. Any other questions before we go to roll call? Roll call.
Councilman Slacta?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilman Simmons?
Aye.
Councilwoman Simons?
Yes.
Councilman Longcard?
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh?
Aye.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Counsel, I need you to be the fiercest advocates that you have ever been for this. You cannot take no from an answer. If you have a relationship with a commissioner, and you need to call in a favor, this is it. There is no tomorrow on this, because without this, you know, we can draw all kinds, we can, these pretty pictures, we can draw all those you want. Not going to happen. Not going to happen. So, you need to call on your cards. All right? What else you got for us? Okay, good. We are going to go to Mayor, Councilmember, and Items, a resolution appointing a member to the City Springs Veterans Advisory Committee.
Thank you, Mayor. With the job creation of Dave Gorthaus, he is, that leaves a veteran-at-large available, and the committee is recommending that Bob Gillette be appointed to that veteran-at-large position, and I so move.
Second.
Motion and second. Is there need a discussion? Bob will be a wonderful addition to that. Yep. Roll call.
Councilman Slacta?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilman Simmons?
Aye.
Councilwoman Simons?
Okay.
Councilman Longcard?
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh?
Aye.
Yes, Steve.
Yeah, just a reminder, June fourteenth is Flag Day. It's going to be held at American Legion Post three oh three at three P.M. The mayor is going to be there, and he's going to speak, and so, if all those, if you've got flags that need to be properly, you know, buried, please let me know, and I'll take care of it. And then also, at the Memorial Day, I just want to thank the city, the council for their attendance, and the Veterans Advisory Committee, Lee County Sheriff's Office, and the Fire and Rescue for their participation in this, and it was very well-attended. And I know a well-deserved time off with Laura and Patrick did an excellent job. So, again, Carl, thank you for all the city's participation. Appreciate it very much, and that's all I have, sir.
All right. Peter?
Steve, it was a beautiful Memorial Day service. Thank you, and thank you for the birthday wishes for my wife. I appreciate that very much. And I just wanted to say, congratulations to the YMCA for the great, I guess, one-year re-anniversary, if you will, celebration that they had. It was nice to see Councilman McIntosh there, I'm sure others were there, but when I was there. And exciting stuff going on over there, new memberships, capital campaign, in all likelihood, coming up this fall for the Charter High School, and a lot of excitement around there. So, I just want to say, let's keep it going and support the YMCA. Thank you.
Okay, Martha?
Thank you so much, Mayor. Councilmembers, I've had several phone calls from people in town, and actually had a meeting, and I've talked to Carl about this, about Spring Creek, near Imperial Harbor, of course, is my longest harp on this council. Got to fix that over at Imperial Harbor. But also, from Cedar Creek, and since I can't call you up on the phone, I'm letting you know now, but there's folks in Cedar Creek who are interested, and I hope that Councilman McIntosh, Spring Creek comes through your district, and that, you know, maybe we can get friends of Spring Creek together to help improve that water body, and, you know, we will be discussing that, I guess, when the DRGR discussions come forward. But I'll be bringing Item forward to ask you for some of that Riverfest Conservation Waterways money we raised, just to do a little project, bringing together the people from
just to do a little project, bringing together the people from Imperial Harbor and Pueblo Benito on a little littoral planting, a little, you know, bank planting over on the creek. And we're working through the issues now, but I like it that, I want the neighbors to get involved, because it is their creek, and for them to own it and take care of it and love it. The Florida League of Cities Conference is coming up, if any of you need, that's the annual conference at the end of the summer, but registration's going on now. I hope Councilman Simmons will be going, but I hope anybody else here who hasn't gone to a conference will go, because you do make great connections and networking with other council members and other mayors from around the state who have sometimes similar issues as we do, and sometimes better solutions than we do, rare as that might be. And last, so the drinking fountains in Lions Pride Park, thanks to Lions Club, thanks to Carl, because I said, "Hey, Carl, we're gonna have to do this and this and that." He said, "Nah, no problem. We're gonna take care of it, easy as pie," and it's true, it was. And thanks to the maintenance guys, Matt, Jason, not Matt, Feeny. Thanks to Matt Feeny too for other things, but anyhow, thanks, y'all, and I think it's adorable, and it stands up to the name Lions Pride Park. So go and take a sip. You can cool off at the Lions Drinking Fountain in the park. And that's it, folks.
Thank you, Martha. Bill, what do you got first?
On June seventeenth, the county is having a budget hearing, and the library is specifically gonna be discussed. And I want to get the input of the other council people in terms of participation, even if just to be there. And I'd like to know the availability of the council people on that particular day. It's at one-thirty in the afternoon at their chambers. It's a, it's a thing where we really have to work together with them as much as possible, and with this new project too. But we have done, in my opinion, personal opinion, besides being a council person, the city has been very constructive in many, many ways, and especially with dollars that the city has generated to the county for their use. And all the things that we've been through over the years with, during the twelve years of incorporation. And every council that I've seen in action, or the one I'm currently on, has tried to work diligently with them, and we still need their cooperation in some fashion to help, especially with the library situation. But they also have some major considerations in their own budget that has been reflected. If you've watched any of the meetings or attended them, you can see they're, they're in a searching mode in terms of trying to accomplish things, and we'll know this budget cycle, whether the library tax, and it looks like in all likelihood it's going to go up substantially, but that's something that's out of our control. But I would certainly appreciate any help that, from any staff or anybody else who would like to, and maybe I could, it starts at one-thirty, we can't go to lunch, it's too late at the veranda, you know? It's close by. Or we could go to lunch first. Yeah, that's right. Well, that's a thought too. We'll think about it. Thank you. That's all.
Okay, thank you very much, Bill.
Okay.
Uh, Dr. Steve?
Thank you. Couple of things. Congratulations to Habitat for Humanity. Five homes this year, five families and new homes. Thank you Kitty Green for your leadership in that organization. Wonderful to see people out there working to support other people's lives, so thank you very much. The, again, the Y was a wonderful birthday. Thanks to all the folks who were there and made that happen. The Rotary Clubs, the noon and morning Rotary Clubs this year worked together to sponsor thirty-six thousand dollars in scholarships for our local students, and that is a record for us. So between the Lions Club, Optimists, and the Rotary Clubs, we've been doing our very best to get our best and brightest students into colleges and through college. The, I met with Mr. and Mrs. Brady at the, at the Wonder Gardens Monday, and walked through with Brian Holly, who runs the Naples Botanical Garden. I asked Brian to join us because I wanted his take on what that facility could be, and does it make sense to do a botanical garden? The, it's an interesting piece of property. We need to try to protect it. Whether it can be, really be a botanical garden is still up in the air, but it's still a very valuable piece of property. I'd like to make sure that the city takes a first shot at making sure we protect that. And finally, I've spoken with staff about this, and I'm not gonna send an email because I don't think it's appropriate, but I am gonna register my concern about Shangri-La Road. From Imperial to Old Forty-One, past Windley Key intersection, and past the Tropic Acres intersection, there's no stop signs. There's no roundabouts. I've been assured by the traffic professionals that you don't need them. I can't imagine that you don't, but I'll go with what the professionals say, but not without registering my concern. Especially when I'm told, and maybe I've misheard this twice, that if you'd have put a stop sign in, they won't stop, which makes no sense to me at all. And I'm very concerned with the driveways, as close as they are to Shangri-La Road after we took the right-of-way. And those two intersections, a two-lane road paved as far as it is between those two roads. I think we really, really need to take a look at this thing. So that's my concern, and I'm done for the evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Yes?
I've had a couple of comments about Shangri-La Road too, and some folks want to make sure that there's some kind of, not gate, what is it, fencing along there? Either that they don't fall down in the ditch, or, you know, they just felt there needed to be some fencing along there. Right. Well, go take a look. There's some slopes, so...
All right, good. Thank you, Counsel, and I had a great time. I'll be brief here. Carl and I and Nicole and my wife Lori went to and visited the Shy Wolf Sanctuary. If you ever have a chance to do that, do it. It's fantastic experience. They do great work there. And basically what they do, they get these animals. There's this kind of a, if not black market, it's just wrong, just plain wrong, where people actually breed the animals, they take the animals, and then once they become actual wolves, they're surprised that they're wolves for some reason. And so they are either killed, or the places like this get them, and they get the wolves, and they rehabilitate them, they, they get them patched back up again. They treat them really kindly with compassion. It's a, it's a really beautiful place. It's a beautiful group of people that work there. So it was, it was a great experience, very heartrending, and they have other kinds of animals there too. And I just, we all came away from there smelling like wet dog. It was awesome. It was awesome, but not that all, that I don't smell like that all the time, but anyway. But anyway, it's a great place, great people, so a shout-out to them. We, I've been having, I gotta tell you, in fourteen years, I'm probably been busier the last six months than I have ever been, ever been, on city council. And it's mainly because meeting with business owners, people starting businesses, people interesting and starting businesses. It's happening all over this community. It is fantastic. And they, and we're not just talking about storage buildings. We're talking about great businesses, delis, comedy clubs, I mean, just all kinds of things going on, performing arts centers, whatnot. So it is just a real pleasure right now to meet with them, and we've got a great staff that, I mean, once you get started to know them and get them to where they know what the process is, our, our staff takes great care of them. We have a great system put in place right now, so you should be really proud of them. I know I am, and proud of this community. With that in mind, a couple of these experiences have brought to mind, the Hertz one in particular, has kinda brought to mind maybe, maybe a chink in our armor there. We have, we've spent a lot of time talking about Old Forty-One and redevelopment, and doing things, which we should, and that is gonna be a success because of our efforts. And on Benita Beach Road, we did that Benita Beach Road overlay, and that has been amazingly successful. The set of architectural standards and the zoning standards we put up there, I mean, it has really worked. It has really worked. We're getting great product there. I'm not looking for anything other than to let council know that I've been talking with staff about doing something really simple, similar on New Forty-One.
Bravo.
Because it really, it, what we don't wanna become is the spot in between Mercado and Coconut Point. We, we need to keep the quality up. We need to, we need to give incentives for the older things that are along there. They need incentives to remodel too, so we're gonna go ahead and look into that. The communities along there, Pelican Landing, Benita Bay, all the great communities along there, they deserve for those areas to be developed in a real quality manner, so Carl's been kind enough. And I know our plate's really full. I know that, but we can't wait. We can't wait. We have to do it, so Carl and staff, John and everybody, they're, they're all gonna be working on this and hopefully bring something back to you, some ideas on what we can do. It may be an overlay, it may be something simpler, but we'll see what we can do, okay? Yes?
Just real quick, I don't know what the final product is gonna look like of the, I don't know, it's a dockaminium with a storage unit that's just south of Imperial, the Imperial Launch, I'm just forgetting what it's called right now, the county park on US Forty-One, which, Ben, I'm one-hundred percent on a US Forty-One overlay, or whatever we call it for standards, because I'm not sure what that's gonna look like, but from the back, from that neighborhood back there, it's not looking good. So I don't know if there's anything our staff can do to, like, put trees in the back, or, you know? I don't know what, you know, is in the DO, but that would be real helpful, because now we're looking not only at that pond, but now, which is neglected, I have to say. And then we're gonna be looking at the back of a not very good-looking building. So whatever you can do to help the neighborhood on a royal, they would appreciate it. Because we have one place that's not built, is just sitting in limbo. Now we have another place that's built, or building, that doesn't look so great. And then we've got this pond in the middle that's not maintained, and it's really deteriorating people's property values. And if we're talking about putting an investment in a neighborhood, that's one place that needs it, so...
All right. Good. Thank you, Counsel. And staff, do you have anything else for us? You're good? Good, good. We, well, before we do that, Rick, did you mention something?
Yeah.
About, could you come up here again? What was it again? Sorry.
In the newspaper, there was an article about getting it done, and they're talking about renursing Lower's Key and Little Hickory Island, the North End, and they said that the federal government and the county and the city were gonna pay, and I thought the state, the state and the city and county paid last time. I didn't know the federal government was involved. And I was just surprised to see this, this whole thing thrown out to the public. It's gonna start in September, and nobody in the city seems to know anything about it.
So the minutes reflected something that you didn't say?
Yes. Well, the minute said that, what I said, what the minute said was the federal government's gonna pay for the whole thing, not the city or the county.
Oh, okay.
I don't think we're getting off the hook.
Okay. Okay, thank you very much.
All right.
Counsel, is there a motion to approve minutes?
Someone.
And a motion and second. Roll call.
Councilman McIntosh?
Aye.
Councilman Slacta?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilman Simmons?
Aye.
Councilwoman Simons?
As amended, yes.
Councilman Longheart?
Aye.
Okay, and at this time, we'll take public comment on any, on anything. Let's go ahead. Most anything.
Okay, Rick Steinmeier, we became a city because we always felt we were a donor community. And maybe we still are, at least in the library aspect of it. And maybe, maybe Carl, with his business experience selling fat, might be able to get some of the fat back from Lee County. How they, how they went from a billion-dollar surplus to, they're thirty million dollars in the red now in a matter of a year and a half that they get rid of Don Stilwell. So I don't know where all that money went, but I hope we can get some of it back here in Benita. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Hi, Deborah McLean, publisher of The Banana Peel. First, I'd like to talk about the art league using the river park, Riverside Park. That's exciting. And I just wanted to suggest that perhaps we could somehow arrange for a shuttle service of golf carts like they have at Fairchild Gardens, which is a botanic garden, and they shuttle people from the parking to the event. And I'm thinking specifically of this city-owned parcel, the Bullard Parcel. That's all, because if we, if you have overage, you have that lot there. It's just how to get them on a golf cart, you know, they have, they hook them together and scoot them to the events. The second issue is, when you were discussing the YMCA, you referenced Policy one point, one point, one eight. The word institutional bothers me under public and semi-public use. I'd like to see the LPA look at that and remove the use institutional in the DRGR. And number three, I like to be funny. I'll try real hard. Arlene said she was gonna reintroduce charm to Old Forty-One. We had no charm. We're going to introduce charm, but we have plenty of characters. Number four, the sixteen million dollars, I understand where the number came from. I understand that it is something that can be lived with, but I also suspect with the infrastructure improvements that it is not enough, but I would first like to see some kind of financing get put in place. And number five, always, what's missing in our local economy are private schools. We need, we have recently had someone who was considering running for District Five come home to find that his children will be graduating from a private charter school here in Benita, and his wife informed him, "As the wives do, we're moving to Naples to be closer to the school where our children will be going." We lose young brain power all the time because we do not have private schools. And that's just as important as the library. And I don't have anything else. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else this time? Please come forward.
A million walk. I'm Ed Fitzgerald. I'm very pleased to see the work of this council towards a new downtown area. I would make the suggestion that if you possibly could initiate or do some of the work as soon as possible. The roundabout, could we put a roundabout in long before we have to get the sixteen million dollars? Or something of that nature. It's a show, just to show the residents that we are moving forward, maybe even to show the county commissioners that we're moving forward. Carl says you have the money to do that, so I'm asking you, if it's possible, is there some core element of this project that could be done as soon as possible? But I congratulate you for the work, and I, I've been here twenty years or so, and it's been disheartening to see how slow it's going. It's not your fault by any means, but thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Next, please.
I'd like to close the meeting with some happy talk again, as always. First of all, our newest intern. What a wonderful experience for him, and what a benefit for the city to have these interns. I mean, I think that's just great. That is just great. It's, there's been so much good news tonight. The art fest, Riverside Park, our beautiful Riverside Park. You know, we know we have, we like to highlight that. And now, since we have an empty seat there, and she can't, Janet Martin's not here to cheerlead, I'll say a few words that, you know, she might have brought up. Number one is our Riverwalk project. Thanks to Carl, Matt, oh, Matt has been incredible. I mean, you say, "Matt, we got exotics, we got poison ivy, we've got..." They're gone. And if you haven't seen that Shell Walk, and if you haven't seen those docks, and the parking lot is gonna be fantastic, the canoe kayak launch. I mean, I just can't say enough about it. We're just waiting now for the, I guess, the permits from DOT, excuse me, to extend it under I-75. You just won't believe how great that is. I think that's about it. I do have to, have to give credit. I always like to thank Colum Hasty, because, you know, he started fourteen years ago. And I also think we should give a little credit to our former county commissioner, Ray Judah, because he worked very hard for it too, to make this possible. So anyway, with that, thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else this time? Please come forward. Seeing none. Thank you, Counsel and Staff. Thanks a lot.